Okay, I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardener Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm gonna go over the ground rules by which this board operates under, then I'll read the agenda. I'll do my best, and we will do our best, to be loud enough so you can hear. You can hear, there's a lot of reverberation in here, and so we ask you to do the same for when we're listening and that we can hear you. You can come up to the front if you want to speak. Not a problem. We have a microphone right there if you want to come up and speak, and when you have the opportunity. Okay. In Gardner... Oh, I see it. "In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf, or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties present at the hearing shall be heard. Those in opposition shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of a city clerk. Members of the board who are hearing the case must make direct appropriate questions to the board. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within 90 days after the public hearing for the special permit. All members of the boards must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. That information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed. The burdens for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rest with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requested each person identify himself or herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearings are, to my left, David Anteia; to my right, Mel Cornet; to my far right, Mr. Randall Haglen; and myself, Ray LaFonda's chair. The meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? Be it known there are no objections? Okay, the agenda for this evening. September 26, 6:30 PM, Perry Auditorium, Gardner City Hall, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. Any documents and all documents referenced and used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the clerk. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Is anyone planning to do recordings, or visual, or audio? There are none. Okay, the cases this evening. Case #07052023 is a continuance, special permit. David and Linda Page. Century Way, PID M32-1-15, Chickens and Roosters. Case 20230801, continuance of variance. Timothy Slocum, 400 Matthews Road, PID W37-27-1, motor vehicle, general repairs, and other business uses. Excuse me. Case 20230901, special permit. Edwin Velez, 210 Nickel Street, PID M22-14-73, renovations of an existing building. Next case, 20230902, special permit. James and Heather Lessier, 99 Church Street, PID M22-8-22A, construct and attach garage to the existing dwelling unit. Next case, 20230903, special permit. Ryan and Amanda Clapper, 124 Edgell Street, PID R27-24-23, construct an addition on the property for an accessory dwelling unit. Case 20230904, special permit. Industrial Tower and Wireless LLC/827 Green Street, PID R42-2-1, construct a 190-foot telecommunications facility and compound. Case 20230905, special permit. Marilo Silva, 4 Stewart Street, PID M27-9-27, renovate housing. Case 20230906, a variance. Cody Doral, 64 A Street, PID M22-2-48, motor vehicle, general repairs. Case 20230907, special permit. Shore Housing Solutions LLC, 20 Graham Street, PID M22-5-8, convert all five units to condominiums. Okay, and at this time, I'd ask you to silence your cellphones if you haven't done so already, so we'll not disrupt the meeting as we go forward. As you can see, we have a pretty lengthy agenda tonight, so we're gonna try to get through it as efficiently and quickly as we can. Okay, I think the first one that I read is David and Linda Page. Just trying to get the right... Okay, the request for a special permit was to keep 30 chickens, including one rooster's pet, at the location of 107 Century Way, Gardner. Correct. Okay. Now, this has been continued. Do you have any information you'd like to provide the board at this time before we move on?
I think I provided. You asked me for some measurements and so forth, so I did provide those before you get them.
The issue is, you know, we do not have a truly definitive ordinance in the city for chickens, but we have for agricultural uses, et cetera, and that's how the city is operating at this point in time. We have had numerous, I think approximately five or six requests for chickens in the city. We've addressed them all, and what we're trying to do is keep some kind of semblance or commonality between all of them when we go through this, when the board looks at it, because some people, as you have, how many, 30?
Thirty, no. Twenty-nine and...
We've had others that have more than 30, and they wanted to acquire 30 more.
Not me. I can tell you that.
And you can see what dilemma we face when we look at this, and we try to make it as fair and reasonable, and everybody's operating under the same premise. Okay, so, I would like to have a motion to move forward on this, to render decision.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I think, you know, if we look, I mean, they have a very nice setup for their coop, and, you know, it seems to be a clean operation and so on. But I think the issue that we're constantly dealing with is trying to establish some type of boundary around the number of animals you can keep in an area, in this case chickens, and so on. So I would like to consider, you know, establishing that number and just adhering to it.
I can tell you now that I don't want any more than what I have.
No, I understand, but I'm thinking in terms of, we've granted as many as 12, I believe.
Correct.
And also, one of the big issues always seems to be in neighborhoods is when you have a rooster.
So...
And, you know, so we tend to ban roosters in residential areas.
Does the bylaws say that? Do the bylaws say that in the city of Gardner, because they state, I'm pretty sure they state that you can have poultry, correct?
That's correct. But I'm not gonna debate it.
Okay.
But that time is over. So I'm just stating my opinion. I think that we need to consider establishing that number, and also being consistent on... We've banned the roosters in, I believe, every case that we've had so far, and I see no reason to change that now.
Could I say something for that? No?
No.
I can't say anything to that? Okay, all right.
Ray can ask you to...
I'm gonna say something anyway, okay? So, because I feel I have a right to say something.
You do, but in a time when it's your time to talk, you can.
Okay, okay.
And you can say whatever you'd like.
Okay, I didn't know.
I'll give you an option right now, because...
What's that?
I'll give you an option to speak right now, because I have a motion on the floor to move on a decision about your chicken, so make your comment now.
Okay. So I know that you want to cut the amount down, and I know you did a site visit, and you found out that, you know, you thought the operation was fine and clean, and I consider these chickens my pets. They are pets. They are not ju... They all have names, every 30 of them, all 30 of them have a name. So you're gonna ask me to get rid of some of my pets?
No.
No?
Whenever we do something like this, we tend to say that, look, let nature take its course.
Okay.
And as the chickens age...
Okay.
And they pass...
Okay.
You just limit replacing them to go to a level of whatever we determine.
Okay, all right. So I would be able to keep them?
Oh, yeah, we're not gonna tell you to get rid of your pets.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna put the motion, put conditions on it.
Very important to us.
The condition will be to limit it to 12 chickens, no roosters. He does have more than 12. We'll let nature take its course in reducing the number to 12, and you cannot replace any of the die. I mean, once you hit 12, you can at that point, but up to 12, I mean, the others, as they go, because we all know chickens can go anywhere from five to eight years.
Mm-hmm.
And that.
Yes.
The rooster will have to be removed within 30 days.
Again, he's... When we were at the meeting, and we had lots of support here, and the bylaws, I believe, say that you can be allowed to have poultry, which...
For consistency within the city...
Huh?
For consistency within the city, we're holding the numbers to 12, no roosters.
The bylaws say something, right? Don't they?
And then you get to let nature take its course to reduce your 30 to 12?
Okay, so is there any way that we can appeal that decision with the rooster?
If you listen to my introduction, if you disagree, the city clerk's office has information to file an appeal on our decision.
Thank you.
Which you don't know what it is yet, because we haven't voted.
No.
So my proposal is 12 chickens, no roosters, no free range on the chickens, they will stay in the coop or in their pen.
They're reduced naturally?
Yes.
Yes.
They'll reduce naturally.
Okay.
But the rooster goes within 30 days.
Well, I would think that we could even think, consider letting that go naturally if there's no complaints.
I did get a no crow collar thing. Sorry.
So you're okay with the no crow collar?
What did you say, Mel? I couldn't hear, because someone else was speaking.
Yeah, no, I was just saying that I think that the rooster, as long as it has the no crow collar on it, is okay to let that go naturally, but you cannot replace the rooster.
And if any complaints come in on the rooster?
If the complaints come in, then we'd have to reconsider.
30 days from the day of complaint.
We'll deal with that at that point.
Yes.
Okay.
So, all those in favor of that with the conditions?
Yes. Yeah, there is one other thing that we should consider. The special permit goes with the current owner, but not with the landlord.
What's that?
If we grant the special permit, the special permit goes with you folks.
Right.
Not with your building or your property, so...
Right, so if we sold the property...
If you vacate your property, this is also vacated.
Yes, that's understood.
Okay. So, all those in favor with those conditions?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposition? So the decision is made. Just to reiterate, you'll get down to 12 naturally.
Yep.
The rooster keeps on his no crow collar.
Mm-hmm.
If complaints come in, you have 30 days to get rid of the rooster.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
No free range on your chickens.
You've seen the setup I have, they don't free range.
I saw it.
They don't free range.
Far better than most people.
Well, I try.
Okay. Don't sit there. We'll move on to the next case.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
The next case...
Randy's gonna be on this one. I have to go home.
You sitting now?
Yeah, I'm sitting now.
Okay. At this point, we're changing members. It'll be myself, Ray LaFonda's chair, Mel Cornet, and Randy Haglen as clerk. Okay, the next issue is Mr. Timothy Slocum, 400 Matthews Street, I'm sorry, Matthews Road, PID W37-27-1. This one says motor vehicle repairs and other business uses. We've already looked at the motor vehicle repairs, and Mr. Slocum, we're gonna present, because I'm gonna make a statement here. I know you're still working under the other contractor's yard, as your original request.
That's correct.
Okay. I have, we have no other information right now of what you're gonna talk about this evening.
Okay.
So, you gotta remember, when we talked about this, if anything comes up, each one of them has to be looked at individually, and what I'm gonna say, if you want to present something tonight, I'll let you present, but no decision will be made, and I'm gonna ask you to supply some documentation to the building commissioner of what you want to do and explaining it. So if you just want to share that tonight, fine. If you prefer to wait, and I'll just continue you two next month, you can have an audience with Mr. Zupa. Prepare your one, two, five things that you feel come under the contractor's yard and meets those definitions, and get that data so it can get presented to us and published, and then we can go forward. But otherwise, we have nothing here of what you want to talk about, which I do not feel is appropriate to the members, because they don't have no idea, and neither do you, do your neighbors or anything like that. They are not aware of any, anything. My suggestion would be asked to be continued to next month and have a conversation with Mr. Zupa. That's my recommendation.
Okay. I appreciate your recommendation. I have had a meeting with the building commissioner, Thomas Zupa, and I guess I'm not sure the process of how he would inform the zoning board of our meeting.
Mr. Zupa, you want to answer that? This is Tom Zupa, the building commissioner.
This is my calculator. This is my calculator. So I had a meeting with Mr. Slocum. I'll actually stay in the mic, it looks a little bit better. A list of various...
I could summarize our meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you like, so a list of categories from the table of uses were submitted to me for approval. My ultimate determination was, I would be, if I was approving specific categories out of the table of uses, I would be stepping outside of my authority as the building commissioner and acting as a zoning board member. My job as the building commissioner is to evaluate individual businesses and determine which category they fall into, and then make the recommendation based on that category that they fall into, whether it needs a variance, special permit, et cetera, et cetera. That's the process. So I can't approve individual categories. I approve businesses within the categories, and then recommend it, recommend they go before the board or the planning board, et cetera.
So we did have that meeting. I did present a summarized use of businesses that are of similar and like-kind to the building commissioner. I also presented the plans that the buildings are constructed to currently to this day, and also feel like we talked about some building code issues of what similar-type building uses and business uses would fall under that building code of allowable spaces within that structure. But we came up with potentially looking at 10 more additional uses on top of use number 60 that's already been approved through the previous variance as a contractor's yard with storage in the open. I do have a list of those. I did talk with the building commissioner about those additional uses, but I wasn't aware that that would need to be presented in a fashion to the zoning board. I guess I assumed that the building commissioner would talk to the board about our meeting, and that's something that I could prepare documentation, just like our meeting we had with the commissioner, to the board to review those number of zoning uses that was proposed that would fall under similar and like-kind, in my opinion.
The unfortunate thing is, you just can't drop it in front of the board tonight.
I understand.
We haven't seen anything. We haven't had the ability to notify any of the abutters or interested parties of what you might be looking at.
Mm-hmm.
So nobody has had that opportunity to prepare for this. You may have had conversations with Mr. Zupa, but we have not seen anything, and I know Mr. Zupa has not said yes, no, you can do this, because I think we were very clear that anything you submit to this board will be looked at, as I said earlier, on an individual basis.
Mm-hmm.
On its, stand on its own character.
Does he need an individual application for each use?
Would that be this form of intent?
That's what's coming from him.
So, if I may, so after we met, after we met, what I did is, you had submitted, I believe, three forms of intent.
Yep.
Couple of them, two of them I approved.
Yes.
That fall within the contractor's yard. One with stipulation, specific stipulation on it, which was the no processing of firewood, bark mulch, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Without prior authorization from the zoning board. I also submitted, one, I believe, was a use variance, so we have that one there. I did draft a letter, emailed it to the board members, notifying them of what I, you know, what we discussed, what my determination was. That was the letter that stated I would be acting outside of my authority as the commissioner. But that letter in and of itself wasn't enough to bring to their attention, is kind of what I'm hearing, the specifics of that. So if I may, I think what I'm understanding is, based on that letter, based on those specific groups that you wanted to have added in as approved categories, I don't want to speak for them, but it sounds to me like they're requesting some documentation for that specifically, so then they can present that to the public.
Mm-hmm.
But I think what you have here, the nesting, this is the one that required a variance. The other two I approved as contractor's yards.
I think that's correct, because you might have the items in there, and I'm just gonna say one of them is storage of logs. Okay? But that doesn't tell us when they're coming, what hours of operation, where they're gonna be stored, how they're gonna be contained, any of that, if I don't know what some of the other items are on there. But we need the particulars for each one, because we're gonna look at each one individually. Will they be delivered on weekends, during the week, any specific times? Are they gonna require additional fencing, something like, we don't know that. So that's what I'm suggesting. If you figure out, if you, each item on there, all the particulars to it, time, date, whatever, color, whatever they're gonna be, are they gonna be covered? Are they gonna be stored internally in one of your buildings or externally? Are they gonna be stored on the side, in the front or the rear? Entry for the trucks, well, I'm gonna use the logs. How are the logging trucks coming in? How are they gonna turn? How are they gonna put them? What's gonna happen there? So we need all that, so we can look at each one and make a decision on its merits based on what you're providing. You know, to make sure, and you gotta remember, your umbrella is the contractor's yard. That's the umbrella over you, and we look at each piece that's coming in under that.
May I speak to that?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the intent of this new variance was to separate from the contractor's yard, to broaden the range of multiple uses in adding the 10 proposed uses that we had met and spoke about. In addition to that, a second part is the proposed tenants that want to occupy that space and submitting these forms of intent in order to have a specific proposal for potential tenants that want to rent that space, which, so there's kind of two parts there that I'm trying to address. One, a broader range, because I'm finding that tenants are not willing to wait two and three months for me to represent them with the forms of intent. That's a real big challenge, to have space reserved for an occupancy is there, which is the reason why it's compelled us to meet with the building commissioner and propose the broader range than a contractor's yard of similar and like-kind business uses in that space.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, and I understand, you know, if they want to rent space, they want to rent tomorrow, not in two months.
Correct.
But you're gonna remember, this is under use variance. Use variances are very limited in their granting. As I said in the prior meeting, we're one of the few zoning boards in the state that have use variance power, and each one has to be looked at individually, and you wanna, you really want to break that shield of the use variance you've got by extending to different things that you now have to run your business. That's why we're gonna, we have to look at, or we want to look at everyone that you propose, and what its impact is on the area, the city, you, the inhabitants, et cetera. And it's pretty hard just to give a blank, yeah, we can expand that use variance for that. It's not gonna happen, because like I said, we're one of the few that grants use variances in the state, and that's very hard to get it. And that's why, you know, you have to do your homework when you put together your proposal, because we need to see what the impact is going to be, and does it stay under that umbrella, or is it starting to wander out of the umbrella? And that's what we look at. And if it's, you know, let's say the logs are a little bit out of the umbrella, but it's still a contractor's yard, but, and one of the items that's in the business use is a funeral home, definitely that's out of the umbrella. You know, that's one of those uses under 33 to 48, or whatever it is. So we have to look, that's why we look at each thing. If we give a carte blanche, okay, then we can't control what comes in, and there's no way to stop it. You know, unless people decide to go to court and fight... You know, unless people decide to go to court and fight it in court. So we're trying to stop it before that happens. And so I'm going to say, if you put your list together, all the details, if Mr. Zupa will chat with you later in the future, that's fine, but that's what this board is looking for. And I'd prefer not to have anything tonight, because we're not aware, neither are they.
Understood. I also understand the definition of a contractor's yard is very restricting for the building commissioner to approve similar and like kind businesses that want to rent that space, which was the intent to present a broader range of business uses that would fit under that umbrella. So I'm not asking for a funeral home, I'm not asking for rental or retail customers to approach the building, but for example, a nesting would be a company that has, buys products at a trade show, would potentially ship them in through a freight carrier and have them dropped off and unpackage them, take out the packaging and the cardboard box, process it on a shelf, inspect for damage, sticker and tag it for pricing wise, put it back in their smaller vehicle, and deliver it to their storefront in Concord, Mass. One employee is projected to work there four hours, twice a week.
Okay, that sounds reasonable, but I'm not asking, I don't want all that dropped on us tonight.
I understand. That was one of the business intents that was proposed to the commissioner that he had to decline, because the definition of a contractor's yard is supposed, so specific, that this was not allowed in that space.
That's right. And that's where the use variance power that we have comes into play, when we listen to your definition and exactly what's going to happen. And then we make the decision, does it fall under the yard, less injurious to the area, et cetera, then we make a decision.
So that's the reason why we're trying to broaden the range, to allow a few multiple uses that are similar and like kind, to allow the commissioner to make that determination and apply conditions like the wood processing?
Yeah, but, I mean, he's not going to make a decision, and he's not going to put any conditions, because now he's acting as zoning board member, which he is not.
Okay, so maybe he stepped out of his bounds of authority to present the tree company?
No, I don't think he did. I mean, he's telling you, that could be under your contractor's yard. He's not saying it is.
Right.
But as you know, he's relying on our decision, and that's why it's imperative that you present all the facts with it, like I talked about. What time do they come, when they turn, what are the size of the loads, where they're going to be stored? He doesn't know all that. And that's why we look forward for you to present that to us. So it would get published in the paper, and people will know you want to look at log storage, or that intermediary storage or that equipment. And then when you come in, you explain it, so everybody understands fully what's happening.
I'm finding tenants are not willing to wait that long in order for me to rent the space, so that's creating very hardship on me, the developer, the property owner, and the builder. And that's why we're trying to quicken that process with the commissioner, to be able to allow him under certain similar like business uses, to be able to present the form of intent, so he could see the detailed definition and make the determination whether it needs to be notified, because it's outside the umbrella of proposed uses, or within the approved uses that could be categorized based on your decision.
But you've just said, though, you're giving the power of this board to him. But he'll make the decision.
But first, they would need your approval of what would be similar or like kinds, and that's what we'll meet.
He can suggest, but he can't say, yes, this is going to be under the contractor's yard, as long as it seems reasonable. Tom?
If I may clarify a bit, providing that the point of the form of intent is to provide a detailed description of what the proposed use is, that's what the form of intent is, it's what it's designed to do. It's designed to be very specific in nature. If you give, if you submit a broad form of intent, it doesn't get reviewed, you need to be very specific in nature. So if I receive a form of intent that is very specific in nature, and after reviewing that, if it falls within the definition of a contractor's yard, then acting within my authority as the commissioner, I'm permitted to approve that, it does not need to go to the zoning board. If there's any question whatsoever within that, and I can't review it properly, and I can't determine that it does meet the definition of a contractor's yard, then it must go back before the zoning board. That's why forms of intent are designed by nature to be very specific. Hope that provides some clarification.
Yes, it is, thank you. And he's done that very well. He's been very easy to work with, if I may say, and the building commissioner, very happy with his service to the community. A clarification question that I have is, once submitting a form of intent to the building commissioner, if it's denied, what are the next proper steps in order to get that reviewed from the board, if he doesn't have the decision to answer to it?
So let me recap. If you present something and he says no.
Yep.
The normal step you would apply through your use variance request, like you did your first go around, complete the paperwork, use variance, you know, he's going to put his decision, he declined it, and that his statement would be, you need a use variance, paperwork gets together, the package gets published in the newspaper, we get it.
Is that the $350 fee for every use variance, for every tenant, all 30 potential spaces?
Yes, sir. Because each one is its own individual piece under use variances, and not under a blanket. I mean, I'll just say this, if you came in with four...
Here's three here, that he's reviewed, two he's approved, one he's denied.
Let's say three, we can look at all three of them, but we're going to talk about them individually. And then if we say, yes, they fit the mold, then we can bid, I'm sorry, vote on one, two, or three.
Understand. The chances of me having all these three tenants to hold on for your approval is not happening. That's the hardship that's getting created through this process with the city.
And the thing, and the hardship under a variance is not financial, it's due to shape topography and land and use. You know, I always say, the financial part is not what we look at. You know, and I mean, I've had people come in, need a variance on an apartment house, and they tell me, I need this variance because I can't support the mortgage. Not our problem. You know, you know what I'm saying, is we have to look at the property or the use, et cetera, individually, and, I mean, the variance on supporting the first part, the hardship that's created, is the hardest of the three criteria to meet. You can easily meet, does it derogate from the intent of the ordinance? Yes. Creative safety hazard, yes or no? Hardship is the hard one. And use variance gives the board a little leeway versus shaped topography and soil conditions, but that's why it's so critical, we look at it in depth.
Understood. So would the board be willing to review the 10 additional business uses of similar and like kind, and consider adding that upon the new variance to allow a wider range of tenants that the building commissioner could speak to, without going through the three-month process?
Well, I'll put it this way, if you want to put in more than one, that's fine, but we would look at each individual. So you could, like I said, come in here with three, walk out with one. Two could get denied.
Of proposed business uses under the use table. I understand. And I think that's what I'm going to meet the next month with the commissioner, and just make sure that these proposals fall within the building code limits and the intended use of the land and space, understanding the contractor's yard and storage in the open has already been approved.
And I'll say this, if he says, yes, it is, then you won't be here before us, because he's going to give an okay. If there's any question, et cetera, you'll be here.
I think there is a question, because he's not able to make the decision of allowing more business uses.
Correct.
Such as 47 and 48.
I don't remember them all.
Understood.
But, yeah, I mean, if you've got two or three who feel very solid about, and he's not saying, yes, these are approved, then you've got to fill out your paperwork, get everything into us, and then we'll look at them.
Understood. So if I may ask for a continuance for next month, and allow me time to meet with the commissioner?
I just want to share this with you, Mr. Slocum.
Yes.
Your original application was filed, and your expiration date is November 16th. Okay?
That was the original July 13th?
I'm putting, well, you go, we received this application on August 8th. And then the application, it's variance, variances want to have 100 days. You've got to hear it and make a decision within those 100 days.
I think that's in my favor, then. So that'll be good.
Well, if you hit your expiration, nothing's happened. If you don't withdraw, now, remember, keep this in mind, if you say, I'm going to withdraw, and that's it, two years before you can come back before this board.
Understood.
If you withdraw without prejudice, withdraw, get your package better, put together, meet with them, it goes into the newspaper, blah, 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 it takes those 14 days or 20 days, whatever it is, at least 30.
Understood.
And then the board would hear it.
Understood. Lord willing, we'll see you October meeting, if I would be allowed to be on that meeting?
Wait a minute, we have to vote on the... You're testing the whole thing on the zoning board tonight. Do I hear a motion to allow Mr. Slocum to have a continuance to the October meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continuance granted. See you in October.
Harry Allen, is that our normal date for October?
October, no. If you look at the expiration, it's, October would be the 17th.
The 17th?
The 17th. And I think his expires on the 16th.
His expires on the 16th.
Oh, boy.
So we'd have to give him an extension.
Yes, we do.
And extensions are limited, too, so we can vote an extension on this.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. His application was August 8th.
100 days and November 16th.
October 8th, November 8th. I'm asking, is the October meeting our normally scheduled night? Like, this month is one week.
Yeah.
Okay.
October's a regular scheduled meeting.
Yep, 17th.
17th.
Okay, I just wanted for the applicant to know that it's October the 17th.
Yeah, because this one's out of sync right here.
Yeah.
This meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so we're all set? You'll continue to October?
No, no extension needed?
Not at this point.
Not? If you don't get it done next month, yes. So you have some, you've got some homework to do, Mr. Slocum.
Thank you, board. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming in and understanding. Okay. Next case is Mr. Velez. Mr. Velez. Okay, Mr. Velez, you have a denial letter from the building commissioner? You can go right up there if you like. And what it is, you want to renovate a property on the corner of Nickel Street and Baker Street? Okay, and it's been denied by the building commissioner because there was a suspension of the permit that was issued a time ago? The property's been vacant for more than two years? Okay? The project did not conform to the local zoning ordinance and the validity of the permit that was issued to you. So if you want to go ahead and start, tell the board and the audience what you want to do, where?
Why doesn't he first say who he is and where his address is?
Oh, yeah, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon, my name is Elvin Velez. I'm owner of 210 Nickelses. And I'm looking to fix the property, was a three-family house, have three apartments on it, and I'm looking to fix it and get it ready to live on it.
Now, when you say fix it, are you suggesting you're going to maintain the three apartments? Are you going to try to increase it?
No, I'm going to keep it in the way it was. Was three apartments on it, and I just want to fix it and leave it in the way it is.
And that's in a single-family one?
Single-family, yep. That's right. But it's because it's vacant, it's lost its, it's lost its grandfather in two years, so it can come back before us with a special permit.
What did you say, Randy? I didn't hear you.
If nonconform, an existing nonconforming is vacant for more than two years.
It has been.
They lose that grandfathering. Their method to come back before us is through a special permit.
Yep.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Continue.
And the house was vacant for too long and have a lot of structural damage on it. So in order for the engineer to see the structural issues, he asked me to do the demolition in interior of the house, to see what is, what needs to be done. So I buy this house for two, like, two years ago, and I was speaking with the commissioner, the commissioner before him, and he approved me like a demolition permit to start demo the house. And he told me after I have the demolition done, he wants to see the floor plans from the engineer, to see what structural of the property needs to be prepared. And I already have all those plans from the engineer.
Yeah, I think that's in your application. The unit, you said three units?
It's three units.
One of them is, one in building is with two units, one three-bedroom, one two-bedroom?
One unit is two bedrooms.
I thought from the, it looked like three bedrooms from your, from the plans that were submitted, and one that was four bedrooms?
Yes. One is four bedrooms, one is three bedrooms, and the other one is two.
It's two bedrooms, okay, okay.
So in the first floor, in the right side, I have a two-bedroom apartment. In the left side, I have a three-bedroom apartment, and then the entire, the entire second floor is one unit, is four bedrooms and two bedrooms.
Any other questions at this thing? I mean, Dave?
The first floor's got four bedrooms. Oh, no, three bedrooms, two, and then the second floor. That's why I was throwing me the sketches here. Okay.
Yeah, he do the...
One, two, three, four.
The existing.
The master, the big one with the, yeah, and sweet bath and everything, yep. Okay.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions, but I'm going to open the floor first. Okay.
Before you do, how many parking spaces do you have there?
In the back of the property, I have, I can fit like six cars in the back of the property, and on front of the property, I have two spaces.
So a total of eight?
Eight.
Now, the access to the rear, is that off of Baker Street?
From Baker.
And you have another entry off of Nickel Street, so that's what you're saying?
Only for the two parking spot on the front of the house.
Okay, so you've got two on Nichols and the other four in the back of the house off of Baker?
Six on the Baker and two on the Nichols.
Anything else, Mel? You got anything else?
Nope, that's it for now.
Okay. Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Mr. Zupa?
So to provide some clarification to the board on this, I was in the neighborhood of Nickel Street, and I saw what appeared to be an excessive amount of work being conducted on the property. When I ran the property, the applicant received a demolition permit only. Property had been vacant and abandoned for a period of two years or more. I don't have the exact number, but it's over five. The building was also condemned by the City of Gardner. Both the building and fire departments condemned the building. Both the building and fire departments condemned the building. As I stated, a demo-only permit was issued. When I approached the property, the back half of the building had been removed, and the roof was being stripped and re-roofed. So this was an interior demolition permit only. So a cease and desist was ordered on, on the building. And then the applicant ordered to come through the zoning board for a special permit to reinstate the property. So that's what brings me here today.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any abutters to the property who'd like to speak in favor of? Any abutters to the property who'd like to speak in favor of? Any abutters to the property who'd like to not speak in favor of? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak either in favor or against this application? Oh, for the record, no opposition, no one to speak? Okay, I have some questions that I'd like to ask you. The apartments have been answered, that's okay. I reviewed your whole application. I think your responses to the nine conditions for a special permit are inadequate in terms of the talks about the safety, etc., of vehicular traffic and pedestrians. Your response was, "It's safe." That doesn't tell us anything, so they're inaccurate, inadequate. Your plot plan does not meet detailing the spaces, outlining where the cars are gonna park, where the entrance, where the egresses are. I made an assumption that you had two, one the right-of-way and the other one right by the, on the corner for Nichols and Baker. But it doesn't show any entrance or regress, so I wasn't sure exactly what those were. It was just an assumption. What is number forty-nine on your plan? There's a square box right next to the building that says number forty-nine.
That's the property next to the house.
That's the next house?
Yeah, the house next to it. So I think that, on that block plan, it's trying to show the driveway is right-of-way for both properties, properties for forty-nine, Baker Street, and two, oh, eight to ten Nickel Street.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, but now that just leads me to the next one. On your plot plan that I'm looking at, other than the dimensions of your lot, you have no dimensions showing how close you are to forty-nine, how close you are to the street. There's nothing on dimensions in here at all. And nothing on the dimensions for your parking spaces that have to be nine by eighteen and where they're located. Because we have to look at turning distances and everything, and is there adequate turning space? And are they gonna entrance, enter off of Baker Street and exit onto Nickel? Or is it gonna be two-way traffic?
It's going to be only one way. It's going to be to Baker Street.
Okay, it doesn't show that here, so we don't know that. Okay. Who owns the right-of-way?
Both properties, forty-nine and two ten Nickel Street.
Is that indeed that shows the right-of-way, that it's owned by the two parties?
Yes.
Do we have a copy of that deed?
Do you own number forty-nine Baker?
I'm sorry?
Do you own forty-nine?
I don't own forty-nine.
It's on the deed, Mr. Chairman, just below the description, "Together with the right-of-way for any and all purposes of Orlando of Melanson."
Okay, got it.
"Agreed with adjoining the Wesley boundary line."
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. And now, where is the snow gonna be stored?
It's going to be depends about how much snow we have. If we, I'm, I'm planning to leave a space between... So in the back of the house, I have like a six feet to leave a space to push the snow to the property line with the, with the neighbor on Baker Street.
Okay. I'm gonna ask my members if they have any questions right now. Do you have any questions?
Well, are, are you gonna modify the outside diameter of the house?
I don't going to, I don't going to remove anything of the existing, of this, of the existing building. On the outside, I just planning to fix the siding of the house. So the structural of the house is going to be the same. I don't planning-
So you're gonna maintain-
I'm going to maintain the, the structural on the, on the exterior.
Okay, so you're not gonna move into any more, I guess, any more setbacks, so you're not gonna build decks or anything like that on the property?
No. I'm going to, what's existing decking, existing porch on the back of the house, I'm just planning to, to fix it, to redo the same thing what's there. So the, the back of the house, right now is open because the back deck was leaking torch to the house. So the entire wall falls down when we demo the, the inside. So that wall is going to be, I have to redo the, the structural wall. But it's going to be in the same many dimension. I'm not going to go any farther in or out of the property.
Since you were issued a stop-work order on, by the building commissioner, you had, he had mentioned you were doing the roof. Had you, have you since applied for a permit for the roof? Because I'm assuming you want to put the roof on to make it weather tight. Have you since applied for a building permit for the roof?
No, I just, I just did the, I just applied for the, for the demolition permit.
I guess my, my other question is, your structural engineer in here had a lot of work related to structural improvements for the roof. Were you just, what, what were you doing on the roof? Were you just making temporary repairs, or were you planning on reshingling it, or what were you doing?
The, the repairs I'm supposed to do on the roof is going to be interior. It's going to be like a system, the existing rafters.
Yes.
So I don't have to do anything on the exterior. So what I did is I just put like a new shearing and you, I removed the old asphalt shingle. I put like a half-inch shearing plywood and I put the-
New shingles on top. Is it weather, is it weather tight now?
It's weather tight now. Oh, I mean, on the, on the roofing, but the, on the siding-
The siding isn't, but the building, there's no water coming through the roof anymore.
Okay, Mr. Velez, I'm gonna make a comment on behalf of the board. I'm gonna suggest that you consider continuing to next month. So you can update your plan, put the dimensions, put where the cars are parked, give all the dimensions, which way in and out on your driveways, where you're gonna store snow, what distance you're gonna, you know, six feet, twenty-five feet? Where you're gonna put it? Because what the board is gonna look at is getting rid of that snow. You know, small storm, four inches, not bad. Get a twelve-inch storm, you're gonna take up all your space, and we will not allow to eliminate parking spaces. So whatever your plan is, you can present that to us. You have your dimensions, and I would suggest you work on the criteria for a special permit again. And be a little more definitive on your answers and explain why everybody's gonna be safe. You know, connecting to city sewers, that, understand, but, you know, there's gotta be more, no, this is gonna be safe. You know, we'd like to know why it's gonna be safe, what you're planning to do. Because you're gonna have a lot of traffic there, pedestrian and vehicular traffic. So what your plan is to make it as safe as possible. And I would suggest you go over those again and be a little more lengthy in your responses to what's gonna happen. That's the suggestion. If you want to continue, we can look to vote to continue it. If you choose not to, then we're gonna vote on the information we have in front of us. Your choice.
And if you decide to no-go to the other meeting and you guys have the decision to let, don't let me fix the house, I can appeal to that decision. I'm just gonna worry about the winter is, is coming and I would like to continue. I understand this meeting is to, to have the house again like a three-family. But if we, I'm not available to build it like a three-family, I, I, I mean, I wanna do it like a, like a single-family if we, if we, if we, it's-
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, you know, I, I would love to vote on this, but I don't feel, one, your responses are adequate, your drawings are inadequate, and I'm gonna make a decision of thinking of doing a favor here and getting it done and approving it. Because once we approve it, we can't go back and say, "Oh, you didn't submit your plan." You know, it's gone. I know you have to submit a plan to the commissioner, but I don't feel like putting all the burden of the board, putting all the burden on him to make sure your plan is right, the dimensions are right. That's our job, your job.
And about the safety stuff, I have an engineer working with me, and I'm follow all his instructions. And I'm going to get like a professional electrical guy to do the electrical of the house. I'm going to get a professional plumber. And I, I'm hearing professional people to do the work, so I think it's going to be safe. I'm, I'm going to follow all the rules from the construction call.
Well, I'd like, the board would like to see this in writing.
And, and with the, with the snow part, if I have to remove it from the property, I, I will, I do that. If I have to, if I, if I have to remove it, I can, I can do that.
I'm sure you can, but we want to make sure it does get done.
I want to apologize about my, in the way I'm asking the question. I, I feel like you want a little bit more from me, but English is my second language and-
No, you're doing fine. You're doing okay. You're, that's, no, don't, don't worry.
I'm doing like a short ask word.
You're doing fine.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, so we just, you'll update the plan, bring a new pa- well, if you want to be continued to next month, you bring it in, submit it, you can get it to Mariella ahead of time, then we can look at it, make sure it, you know, meets what we consider at least a basic standard. And mark everything, your dimensions, you know, your plans inside of the building, fine. Outside leaves a lot of questions.
And about the snow, if I'm going to remove it, how I can prove you right that I'm going to remove the snow from the property?
We've done this in the past, you know, we've, depending where it's located. You know, if the pile gets, you know, three feet high, it's, it goes.
And how I can prove you I'm going to do that if I need to?
Yeah, the condition.
And we'd put there's a condition on the decision.
Okay.
Yep. So if we make some conditions, you know, fine, then we put them in, and you have to abide, abide, abide them. If you don't, then the commissioner will come in and have a chat with you about how to meet the condition.
Okay.
Just to help you and be a little clearer, in your mortgage plan, you've got, they show the back area. This is the back parking area.
Yes.
We need to know, how big is that parking area? And can you fit six, nine-feet wide, nine-foot wide parking spaces within there?
Nine feet wide and-
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet.
Yeah. Can you-
How many I need to?
Well, you need, I think you need a total of, by code, six, six parking spaces. But you said you was gonna get six back there, but if you get-
And, and-
But if you get five, and you still got the two out front, so you still have adequate parking.
Because I just need four in the back and two in the front.
Yeah, yeah. But we just want to know, how big is that paved area? You know, what is it, what are its dimensions?
Okay.
And then how your parking is gonna be laid out in there? And incorporate into that, you include in that where you're gonna pile the snow. So if the snow is getting piled and it's not impacting a parking space, you know, we're not as concerned about it. But if it gets to a certain point where you lose a parking space, then it's, I mean, but from my perspective, the more parking you can have for this property, probably the better, because you have that one big apartment with the four bedrooms. That's probably, you know, that's, you know, they may more definitely have more than two cars, for sure. So, I mean, it'd be, you know, I think it would be in your long-term interest to have as much parking as you can manage without, you know, without creating other issues for you.
Okay.
Okay, but that's, that's kind of what he was referring to, was missing. And we want to know, can you fit those parking spaces within that paved area? And how, if somebody's backing out, is it, is there enough room for somebody to back out with a, you know, one of these, you know, big pickup trucks that people have today, or big SUVs or whatever?
Okay.
So that's, that's kind of what he's looking for.
All right.
Because I think your comment number two goes to directly to safety. Convene, provides convenience, safe vehicular and pedestrian movement at the, at the property. We want to see how that is gonna be proven to be true.
Okay. So I, I can, I can bring you that in the next bit.
Yeah, if you, get it to Mariella ahead of time, so she can distribute it to us.
Okay.
And then that way, we can, we'll take a look at it and we'll be familiar with it.
Okay.
Okay. But a picture is worth a thousand words. Right, right, Ray?
Yes, sir.
So the more pitch, and even pictures, you know, digital pictures of what it, you know, what it is is very helpful sometimes as well.
Okay, would you like to continue to next month?
I would like to continue to the next one, yes.
You do? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
No.
Okay. Continue to next month for the October meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
For now, can I keep working on exterior of the house if I apply for a building permit?
It's up to Mr. The Commissioner.
Nope.
So at this point, no. In order to even do the work initially on the property, you had to come before the zoning board to get the property reinstated because it was vacant and abandoned for a period of two years or more. So it had lost whatever status was assigned to it. So until you get things squared away with the zoning board, you can't do any work. The existing permit that was issued, the scope of that permit was exceeded. So you violated the building permit that was already issued, so we can't allow you to continue working on, on the property. I think this, at this time, the best course of action would be comply with what they're looking for specifically for, for the zoning board, but also have your Massachusetts Registered Design Professionals start working on your plans. This type of project needs to be overseen by a design professional. It cannot be overseen just by a general contractor. So there are gonna be lots of stipulations and requirements that go along with the reconstruction of that building. So I think complying with their requirements before next month, but also get working with your design professional and actually working on creating the plans for that. Should they give you an approval, you're gonna have to have those plans. And what I don't want to have happen is have you be delayed another two months because you don't have the proper plans for me to review when it comes time, when it comes time for the permit.
But the floor plans, you want to, I have already have for the interior of the house, that's, that's what you need or you need-
No, no, so floor plans are not sufficient, not for a three-family or a four-family or a five-family. You need plans drawn by a Massachusetts Registered Design Professional that bear their seal and signature as well. So this is a building that you're gonna have to do sprinkler system in because of the, the amount of work that you're doing and the weight configuring of the space. You're gonna have to comply with a fair amount of, you know, energy requirements. So this is where the design professional comes in. They have to oversee the project.
And if he, if he besides to do like a three-family on it, can I, can I, can I just do like a two-family, two apartments on it?
Well, that would be, that would be the call of, of the zoning board. But my initial assumption here would be that you'd have to, you'd have to come back for a separate, a separate application. You have to submit a separate application and go through that route.
To go like, to, to-
Yep, yep. But, but again, that would be, that would be the decision of the zoning board.
All right.
Okay?
So that you have to-
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll turn it back over to them before you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sir, you're all set.
The question I have now is, after what he say, I would like to just do like a two apartments on the property because I feel like doing a sprinkler system and all this is going to get more of the budget I have for that property. I don't want it to be available to keep it on, on three-family.
A two-family is permissible in a single-family. So he doesn't have to come before us, right?
That's right. That's right.
That's right, by right.
So, by right, so you just work with the building inspector, get your building permits and get whatever you need to do your renovations. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't have to come before us.
Okay.
Okay.
It was the, it was what was triggering it, was the three fam, making three family, that was what was triggering it.
Okay. So two family I can apply with?
I believe that to be the case.
Yep, so you're all set to go if you want, you can meet with him anytime you want.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. The next case before the board is James and Heather LaSour, 99 Church Street, PID M22-8-22A, construct and attach garage to the existing dwelling unit.
Just a point, Mr. Chairman. I do work for the community that Mr. Proctor's working for some clients for, and we have a professional relationship with those property owners and the property is developing, but there's nothing else more, just wanted to put it out there.
Okay. Well, you can go there if you'd like. Part of that is what I wanna chat about. On your application, there has been an error made. They got you coming in for a special permit. It should be a variance. And we can't run this case tonight based on a special permit. So the option, we can ask you if you would like to withdraw without prejudice, and as soon as possible, start another application for variance. Mariella can publish it for the October meeting. And because the error happened on the side of the city, we would not charge you for the next one.
Do you wanna speak to that, Ryan, or should?
Um, my name, James LaSour, 99 Church Street. Is that our only option?
The.
I mean, because we're looking at weather now, I mean, we've been going through this process for five months. First, you guys didn't have a building commissioner, we had to wait for the permit to come back.
I understand.
The work is the same. I mean, if the applicant's prepared to move forward with addressing the criteria for a variance, is that acceptable?
I don't know, it hasn't been posted.
That's the posting is the issue. Is anyone in the audience here for this case? There's no response, that there's no one here looking at this case? I think if somebody was against it, they'd be here, hopefully.
I, I can speak, the neighbor, their butter neighbor actually lives out of town, he rents the property.
Have you had conversations with your neighbor?
Not since he left. He bought the house during COVID, didn't like the area, moved back to where he came from in, in the city, and he rents it out currently.
I wanna speak to Mr., we got Tom Zupa here, get his opinion.
I mean, in the advertisement, the average person doesn't know what the difference is between.
No, and that's why if they were against it, they'd be here. Mr. Zupa, can we see you for a moment? Board has a question for you. This is sort of, that an error has been made on the city's part for a special permit, should be, the board feels it should be a variance.
This is for the garage.
Yes.
Garage, yes. So I spoke with, with Mel. This was an oversight on the, the part of the city, on, on my part. It technically is variance and not a special permit requirement. So you're encroaching on the property line, which means, so if you were going in line with the property line, it would be a special permit. Since you are encroaching on the setbacks and creating a new non-conformity, you're, you're getting closer to the property line. It's a variance and not a special permit.
So we are looking at possibility that they're willing to address the criteria under a variance. I know we haven't published it, there's no one in the audience that has any connection with this case at all.
Okay.
And if they can adequately address the variance conditions, then I feel we can move forward, but I just want your input.
Yeah, I, I think if you're, you're comfortable with it, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that, I think that's more than adequate. Like I said, it was, it was a mistake in the wording on my part, if they're willing to address that and, and the board's okay with that, then, then I'm okay with that as well.
Mr. Haglund, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Mel?
Yep.
Okay. You wanna take it from the variance side? You know the variance conditions, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you need another continue?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yes, thank you, board.
Welcome.
So, uh, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Ryan Proctor, I'm with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, I'm representing James and Heather LaSour for their project, which as mentioned was the garage addition, an attached garage to their existing house. The existing lot and house are both conforming to the lot area frontage and the existing house is conforming to the zoning setbacks of the town. As mentioned, we originally had filed under the special permit per the zoning determination letter by the building inspector. I apologize, we were a little shocked by that as well. Shame on me for not following up with him relative to that, so thank you for accommodating us. I'm gonna go off the fly here, because as I mentioned, I addressed the special permit criteria in our application. I do have the variance criteria here in front of me. One of them, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The attached garage is going to be of similar architecture to the existing dwelling. There is quite a bit of landscape vegetation between the proposed garage and the abutting property to the east. The proposed garage has no windows on the, the abutting property side of that dwelling, so we don't anticipate any light encroachment on that property. There's no floodlighting for the proposed garage, and we have set it back on the house as much as possible to reduce the amount that we're encroaching into the setback. Without nullifying or substantial, substantially derogating from the intent or the purpose of the variance, but not otherwise, we're not changing the use of the proposed dwelling. It's a single-family residential house now, that, that is still the use. The, the owners do park in this location now, so we're modifying what's, what's being done there now with, relative to parking, getting away from the setback, providing them a covered spot for their vehicles. We're owing, in the last criteria for the variances, we're owing to circumstances relative to soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures. The house and property is slightly skewed to the lot line now. So originally, we did have a larger garage, because they wanted a more conventional 22 foot wide for the two-car garage, we did dial that back to reduce that amount that we're projecting into the setback. I think that's all I have to say at that, I, I have to answer the questions.
I think, looking at the plans, the way the house is situated, it's not parallel with Church Street.
That's right, yes.
And if you look at your setbacks on, on both sides.
Yep.
It's impossible to meet any side setback, because one, I think there's one is like 19 feet and the other one is, I forget, but it's, you would not be able to meet any setbacks because the house is canted.
That's right.
And it, you're close to the line. So I think, when I looked at this, I felt this was probably the best approach or location, because you have all the shrubbery on, as you look at the house on the left side, which shields any abutter to look over yourself there, et cetera. Plus, you know, the across the street is the senior center, the high-rise and everything else, so I mean, there's really no impact there. And, but that's what I noticed when I first looked at the plan, how the house was canted, and I said, there's no way of, of setback here. And that's when it came up, that we said this should have been, should be a variance. So we're trying to accommodate as best we can for you. And I think you addressed the three issues adequately.
Well, I, I do, I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The way that you place the garage, and I'm assuming that if you push the garage back more towards the rear of the property, you could meet those setback requirements if you really wanted to. However, I assume that would create a problem connecting to the house? Is that why you selected that location?
That's right, and I think, sorry, that thing was, the stand was broken, so I have it down here, but I think it would take quite a bit of distance pushing it back before we got to that setback. Also, even at the end of the garage, at this width, we're still very slightly encroaching or just at the zoning setback, so.
Yeah.
I think that pushing it back to that level would, aesthetically would make sense and functionally would.
Now, your little pictorial shows a breezeway, I guess, or connecting room, is that still there or is that all pushed back? Is that removed?
That's existing.
That's existing?
All right.
Got it, okay.
I'll go and see if anybody's got any questions.
No, not right now.
Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application, excuse me? Any abutters to the property present to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters to the property present would like to speak in favor of this application? Be it known, there's no one to speak? Anyone would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? Be it known, no one is opposition? I'll ask my board members if they have any further questions? No questions, Mr. Cornet, Randy?
No, you just said, you're just kind of a floodlighter, lighting on the front of the facade of the garage or?
Yeah, carriage light.
Just carriage light?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, and if you do put any lights, they either shine directly down and not towards. I have a question, though. On the garage, for drainage, what type of roof are you putting on? I don't know the technical terms, but the peak, if, is the peak gonna be towards Church Street like this? Or is it, is the flow of water off of it? Oh, yeah, going towards the abutter.
There's gutters being installed.
What, excuse me?
There's a gutter system as well as the house of the gutter system.
You're gonna have a gutter system?
Yes.
So at the discharge point at the end, it will either be facing or, or towards your backyard?
Correct.
Not the opposed?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had for a question. Okay. I'd like to hear your motion. If every member's all set to vote on this.
Motion to move.
Second.
Any further discussion? None? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition? Variance granted.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good night now. You're welcome. Oh, Ms. Lucier, did your wife mention the farm when we, I asked? You too. Okay. Okay, the next case is 2023, 0903, special permit, Ryan and Amanda Clapper, 124 Edgell Street.
Proctor, Dillison Roy here again to represent the applicant.
You representing him?
I am.
Okay. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ryan.
Name and address.
Ryan Proctor from Dillison Roy, represent, 1 Main Street, Ludenberg, Massachusetts, representing the owners and applicants, Ryan and Amanda Clapper. Amanda is in the audience with us tonight. So the proposed project is accessory in-law suite. Amanda's mother is moving up and intends to live with Ryan and Amanda at the property. The existing structure on this lot, 124 Edgell Street, is non-conforming with respect to the side yard zoning setback. So we are intending to construct the in-law suite in line with that existing foundation along that non-conforming line. In fact, I think it's skewed a little bit to the property line, so as you go further, we're increasing the setback distance to that property line slightly. It's a single-story addition, again, it's gonna match the existing character of the existing dwelling, and, and no changes other than the addition are, are proposed to the house or the parking, which is accessed via a paved driveway on the east side of the property.
Now, you, on your, your drawing, you show a proposed deck. Is that a ground-level deck or is it an actual?
Uh, it's a landing, landing area, and there's a few steps leading down to grade.
So that's, you're actually, are moving a little bit into?
You're increasing the non-conformity.
Yeah, you know, I, I just had a conversation with Amanda prior to tonight, I did notice that. We do have options if needed, they, they would like that as a second form of egress. However, there are different options on that addition if we had to relocate it to a spot that conforms to the setbacks. And there is a second form of egress on the right side of the addition, approximately here, to get into the backyard. To get to the backyard, there is a second door here, in addition to the egress through the dwelling, the existing house.
Unless I'm mistaken, that, then we're talking another variance again.
That would be different, yeah. So if, if the board were to act favorably, we'd, we'd be happy to accept the condition on relocating that into, within the setbacks, in a matter that conforms.
Are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of, representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? There's no one to speak from the city? Any abutters to the property would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters to the property would like to speak in favor of? Get known or none? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? For the record, there are none. My board members have any further questions?
Mr. Proctor put a lot of time putting together the responses to the conditions for a special permit. Do you want to go through those briefly?
I think that would be a good idea, quickly.
Happy to do that, yep. I know you have a busy agenda, so I'll try to be efficient. So the special permit criteria, I did spell them out in my project narrative. The first criteria, the proposal shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and should be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses. So the, the intent of the property, again, is, is to have Amanda's mother live with them. The use is still a residential dwelling, and the addition will match the existing architecture of, of the existing house, so we're not creating a new, a new structure here. The second criteria, the proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets, property improvements. There is a driveway and a one-car garage on the right side of the dwelling, so that's remaining unchanged. There is adequate off-street parking. I'm sorry, I'm not reading verbatim, I'm trying to be, be.
You're doing fine.
The third is the proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking and loading and on the vehicles. I, I just spoke to that, there is a driveway on the right side of the dwelling, which is opposite from where the addition will be, and there is access, again, around the back and through the dwelling to the, to the proposed addition. Number four, the proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. We're not proposing any change to the sewage and water facilities on the property that are gonna be used as they are now. Number five, the proposal shall not constitute a nuisance due to air, water pollution, erosion, flood noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. With the exception of the addition, which is gonna be of like material to the existing house, we're not providing or proposing any additional site features at this time. Number six, the proposal shall not be substantially inconvenient or hazard to abutters, vehicles, or pedestrians, as determined by the Special Permit Granting Authority. We're, as I mentioned in my opening statement, we're holding that, that line along the property line, so that we're not increasing the non-conforming nature of the structure. Seven, the proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. The project involves a residential use within a residential zoning district, we're not changing that, and we're not increasing the non-conforming nature of the structure. Number eight, the proposal should not have significant detrimental impact on city services, tax base, and employment opportunities. Again, a single-family house within a residential district, we're not changing that, with this, with this. project. The proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan and master plan. I did go into specific on this one. Item H2-3 of the community development plan is to allow more flexibility in development of accessory units, which this project includes, an in-law suite addition to an existing single-family residential structure. And last, I wasn't sure if it applied, but I included anyways relative to a zoning map amendment, and that is...
Doesn't.
It doesn't apply here.
Thank you. Okay. Members, do you have any questions?
No.
Comments? You want to move forward with this one? Okay?
Sure.
Do I hear a motion?
Still move to move forward on the application.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just one comment. It's a...
Addition. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, just a comment too that it's an established old neighborhood, existed prior to zoning. It's only got 75 feet of frontage, so, you know, they're squeezing the in-law suite onto the property. Back to Mel's comment about a condition.
Yeah, the condition, I think we should consider moving the exit so we don't face a variance issue.
We'll give them the option, applicant to move the secondary egress or apply for a separate variance.
Whichever they want.
Do you need to speak to the owners or...?
I spoke to her prior to the meeting. That's agreeable condition with us.
So what's your, is it a condition you want to add?
Yes.
Okay. Want to state the condition?
Well, the condition is to move the secondary exit to a point where it doesn't violate the current setbacks.
Okay. So sort of from the left side of the building to that right side?
Wherever they can put it. Wherever they can put it.
To eliminate the issue.
So it just doesn't increase the non-conformity to the goal?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So all those in favor approving this request with the condition of moving the secondary egress to an area that does not increase the non-conformity?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposition? Approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone in the audience need a couple-minute break or anything at this point? None? Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, there we go. The next case before us is 2023-0904, special permit. Industrial Tower and Wireless LLC, 827 Green Street, PID R42-2-1. Construct a 190-foot telecommunications facility and compound. Okay, agent or attorney? Good evening.
Good evening.
We have requested...
Name and address.
Name and address first.
Kevin Delaney, Industrial Tower and Wireless, 40 Lone Street in Marshfield, Massachusetts.
Okay.
We have requested that one of our associates couldn't make the meeting tonight, and we're going to connect them via telephone, if that's still okay?
Okay.
It was this one. Let me see.
I'm looking for...
Right here. Oh, no. It was this one. It's right here. Now the... I will wait.
You can move over.
That didn't work.
You hung up.
Sit right up front, Russ. Get expensive seats.
Five, six, seven, eight.
There you go.
Six, seven, eight, nine. Five, six, seven, eight. When you see how it's...
Ready?
Don't hit up and that's to cancel. That's that. Tell that, and then it's local. Is this one right there? This one's still... Okay. That's five, eight, seven, six. No, that's the wrong number.
That's not the right number.
No. Okay. It's three.
Appreciate you accommodating us.
I've heard they're along the process.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right, we're ready to start the case presentation. Bye.
Okay, so thank you.
Okay, fabulous. Hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak via phone. My name is Shayna Gallinott, and I am a consultant for Industrial Tower and Wireless. Their address is 40 Lone Street in Marshfield, Massachusetts. And the gentlemen that are there this evening along with myself are here seeking a special permit to construct a 190-foot lattice-style wireless communications facility in the rural residential two districts at 827 Green Street. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Kevin Delaney, who will introduce the rest of the team and run through the presentation for you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Kevin, you're on.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Also with me tonight is Kevin Fadden, who is the site acquisition consultant for the area, and Rick Vosie, who is our in-house surveyor for the company. As Shayna mentioned, we're seeking the proposal of 190-foot lattice tower at 827 Green Street, which is also Route 140 in the city of Gardner. So I have a PowerPoint presentation that I would like to go through tonight that shows you where the site is and exactly what we're trying to do and what it will look like. So again, the property is located in the north, northern section of town. It's very close to the town line, and we are proposing, again, 190-foot tower, which is located here on the property. Now, to access the site from Green Street is through an existing driveway that's approximately 820 feet in length. Again, my point there is not working, so I'll just do it with my hand, but this is the driveway that they're using to access the site that exists today. And then from this point, we'll be constructing or proposing to construct a 430-foot gravel driveway, which is approximately 12 feet in width, which leads to the compound. The entire area from the street to the site is within a 25-foot wide access and utility easement. There'll be a locked gate just beyond the existing buildings that will prevent unauthorized vehicle from getting to the compound.
Now, will that compound be totally surrounded by fencing or is it going to be open?
Yes, it'll be fenced. Yeah. In fact, I'll go through the details of the site itself right now. This is kind of a close-up of the compound itself, so it's within a 100-foot by 100-foot leased area, and the compound itself will be 80 by 80 within that leased area, and that will be entirely fenced.
There currently, but you only own, or you're leasing, what, you said 100 feet out?
Correct, yes.
That other 90 feet, what's going to prevent people from building there someday?
Well, this is all, this area here beyond, everything in the woods is all wetlands, so we couldn't build out there anyways, and there's certain setbacks from there, so it's actually pretty protected. We're outside all the wetland boundaries and everything, but building beyond that would be difficult because of that.
I understand, but you need to make sure that nothing is ever built within that fall zone.
Yeah, and if you wanted to make that a condition of the approval, we would be perfectly happy with that. There's also no tree clearing as part of this project either. No trees need to be cleared to build the compound. Within the compound itself, there's six inches of three-quarter inch crushed stone. The tower is in the center of the compound, and then the communication shelters surround the compound. This next picture is an example of one of our sites taken from a drone. So again, you see the leased area is kind of what you see cleared, which is that 100-foot by 100-foot, and then the compound itself that's fenced is here. Again, the tower is in the middle. It's a lattice-style tower, and communication shelters are below it, as you can see here. And that gate that we spoke about is in the front of the shelter.
Is that lattice tower 190 feet?
This particular one here is 170 feet. 170 feet. But it's more of this to get an idea of what the compound looks like more than anything else.
Are you going to try to camouflage that thing?
We do not propose camouflaging because it really draws more attention. You've probably seen some of the fake pine trees on the Mass Pike. Yeah, they look, they draw more attention to it than a typical, just regular tower does, so. They were popular when they first came out, and then people saw how kind of ridiculous that they look, and they're not that popular anymore. The tower itself is going to be unmanned, so there's no additional need for sewer or water hookups from the city. And there's also only going to be, once the tower is constructed, there's just maintenance crews who will show up from time to time, so traffic affecting the area will be negligible. This here is just an example of the vertical profile of the tower. Again, it's a lattice-style tower. It's capable of co-locating the maximum number of co-locators possible, so this particular tower is capable of co-locating five antenna arrays. In tab eight of the application package that was submitted to you, there's what's called an FAA determination of no hazard. And so what that means is that the FAA has reviewed this site, and they deem that it's safe. It's not a hazard to air navigation. But most importantly of all, it does not require a beacon or a light of any type on top of it, so there's no lighting at all required on it.
How do you get power out to the tower? Normal power, obviously an emergency generator for emergencies, but...
Yep, so we'll have utilities that'll be run underground to the site, yes.
You're going to have batteries on there for battery backup?
They will. So this next map is what we call our propagation studies, and this is basically a coverage map. You know, tower locations are not chosen at random, rather, there's a lot that goes into identifying the coverage gap itself and the correct location on how to fill that coverage gap. So initial RF engineering modeling was done on this particular area on this site, and this software takes into account key variables like the location, the latitude, the longitude, the antenna height, the ground elevation, the frequency, the trees in the area and vegetation, and it comes up with these maps here that you see before you. Just to give you an example, just to explain these maps a little bit, so the green line here are the town lines, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Of course, the city of Gardner is in the middle, and then to the northwest, we have the town of Winchendons, we have Ashburnham, and to the north-southeast, we have Westminster, and to the west, we have Templeton. That's what the green lines represent. The red lines represent state or federal highways, so of course, we have Route 2 to the south, but Route 140 is the route that we're looking to cover here in the surrounding areas. These little blue boxes represent the existing sites and towers that exist in the city of Gardner today and outside the city of Gardner and the surrounding towns. The colors that you see on this map represent signal strength. So the yellow color represents in-building coverage, so that would, a phone would work inside a wooden building or a brick building. And the blue represents in-vehicle coverage. So when you're in a vehicle, you have more exposure to airwaves, and you have better coverage, so the blue obviously goes a little further.
I just look where I live. I don't have coverage in my house, and here it says it's yellow, but I can attest that it does have coverage.
Yeah. So this is a prediction tool, so it's not 100%, but any of us who have driven Route 140 in that area know that it's terrible coverage. You drop your call. You can't maintain it.
It's just 5G planning, or is it?
It will be, yes. Yep.
What kind of coverage will you get on 5G?
Yep.
Because I know 5G's a lot more limited than...
There's different types of 5G service, so there's basically three tiers of frequency levels that work. When you get into cities like into Boston, highly urbanized areas where the population is very high, they operate at very high frequencies, so they don't cover a huge area at all. It's a small area, but the capacity for that is very, very large. More rural areas where this particular site is proposed, they're lower frequencies that propagate a bit further. So I'll show you in a second exactly what this site is going to propose for coverage. But this here is basically the gap area that we're looking to cover. The white area represents no service at all or very unreliable service, so you may get a phone call, but you're going to drop it, and you're not going to be able to transmit data from your phone or watch video or anything like that. And the next map shows what the proposed site will do for coverage. So I just go back and forth a few times, but you can see this entire gap area here in service will be filled with the proposed site. In tab five, we included an alternative site analysis to show the board that we've reviewed multiple sites to try to find the best site that will work. Of the nine sites that we looked at, this is the only site that would work, and we listed the reasons why in that tab. Most of it had to do with wetlands. There's a lot of large property in the area, but a lot of it is covered in wetlands. There are no existing structures or towers within the coverage gap that will provide coverage to it at this point. Otherwise, we would already be there. Just briefly, I wanted to show you again examples of what lattice towers look like. Again, I showed you one from the drone looking down, but this is what they look like basically from the ground level. We find lattice towers are the least intrusive visually towers because you can see through them as opposed to the monopine or the monopole-type towers. This is just an example of that. And this is an example of what that ground compound looks like from the ground. Again, this is that 80-foot by 80-foot fenced-in compound. And this is just an example of the sign that will be posted at the site. This is required by the FCC. It's basically just an identification number that someone could see the number and look it up and get the details on the tower. It also has our phone number in case anybody needs to reach us for any reason at all. And just a little bit about, I'll be brief, but a little bit about Industrial Tower and Wireless. We've been around for 50 years. We have a lot of experience in the wireless industry. We're different from other companies because we do the work in-house. A lot of these other types of companies will hire multiple contractors to do the work. That's not how we do it. We have our own foundation crews. Foreman of our crew has been with the company for over 30 years. I've been with the company for over 30 years. Rick Vosie has been with the company over 20 years. Kevin Fadden has been with the company over 12 years. I'm just trying to say that because we have a history. We're very careful. careful how we do our work, and we're, we're proud of it, and we wanna work with the city and, and do the best possible, uh, job that we can. Um, we also have our own in-house electricians who do all the utility work at the site, right from the digging the utilities underground to the site to working with the power companies to get it connected. Uh, we also have our own tower erection crews, so they build the towers, and we have technicians who actually put the antennas up on the towers, so nobody climbs our towers other than us. And also, just, this is kind of a, a special project, and this is nothing what will be proposed in the town, in your city, but, you know, we do jobs that are pretty intense. This is an example of a four-hundred-and-sixty-foot tower in West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, where we had to put a broadcast antenna that weighed about ten thousand pounds on the top of it, so we had to use a helicopter to, uh, to hoist that up. Again, we have our own landscaping crews too, that, that maintain the properties and make sure that they, they look nice, so. I, I just share that with you, because, uh, again, we, we wanna work with the city, and we're, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, and, uh, we really wanna bring reliable service to this area and this part of the city. So, that really concludes my PowerPoint presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or one of us here can.
Another quick question, the, when you said that, uh, you're the only ones going up the tower, did I say you, you own and maintain the antennas?
We don't own them, we don't own the antennas, but we install the antennas.
And you maintain them?
Yeah, so when a, a carrier like Verizon goes on the tower, we install their equipment on the tower for them. The only work that they do is on the ground to their transmitter equipment.
Okay, so if, if there's maintenance needed, you go up to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Randy, any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Uh, in the application, it does say that the, uh, city has the right to hire a consultant to review the whole application and all the data, et cetera. That can be costly, can take time. Do you have any references of communities that you have done this work for, installed towers, et cetera, worked with them, and, uh, that you could provide us, that we could contact those cities and ask on how your performance was, did you meet all the criteria, et cetera? Trying to make sure we get enough data, so we'll be comfortable if we don't have to hire a consultant, and we did this one, oh, probably within the last year, on one that, uh, telecommunications tower that came in, we contacted the, the town, and they gave us glowing recommendation of how you met everybody, not you, but the, the company met everything.
So you're basically looking for towns where we've built towers, and just how the process went, and if they're comfortable with what we've done?
Yo, did you do what you said you were gonna do?
Absolutely.
All the, um, you know, the testing, the studies that are done for, um, radio frequencies, et cetera, everything was fine, so if you could provide one or two communities, cities, towns, uh, that, and a contact name and number that we can get in touch with?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, we don't wanna incur some additional cost, oh, to your company and the applicant if it's not necessary.
We appreciate that, thank you.
And, okay, that was my question, so if you can provide that, you can provide that to Mariella?
Okay.
And she'll get that to us.
Okay.
Uh, on the, the fencing around, there's a no trespassing sign and everything, right, that goes on that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I couldn't see it on the picture. Um, you're maintaining, I saw, you're maintaining the, uh, the fall zone for the tower in case it does come down?
Yes.
Okay.
And just so you know, in tab four, it shows the, the sign, and a private property no trespassing sign is one of the signs listed.
Okay. The applicant is gonna maintain the roadway, the, that twelve-foot-wide gravel road going into the, uh, communication center?
We, we will maintain that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I guess, uh, the one item I go for, I know in your presentation, you said you really don't need to do that, is if the tower is abandoned, either standing or down, uh, many, many companies or communities will request like a performance bond or something like that, that in the event you don't take care of it after a year, they can go in and remove it at the cost of the insurance and...
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to do that, this is kind of one of those things where literally we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to bill up, build and develop it, we're never going to abandon it, but if the town feels comfortable, the city feels comfortable with having a bond, we, we'd be willing to do that. Um, we ask that we be able to, um, give you three estimates of what it would cost to remove the tower if it was abandoned, and if you could use one of those estimates or an average of those estimates, um...
Okay, if you could provide that?
Okay.
That'd be appreciated. Um, so you got the tower removal, I am sure your customer gamma would be taking care, and you will take care of that road?
Of course.
So, fallen trees, et cetera, all that thing. How often do you go out and check the tower?
So we have a, a maintenance group that usually goes out there on a monthly basis to, to check it.
Okay.
And of course, where there's people on the property every day that will see it, they'll call us probably before anybody has to go out there and let us know, and we'll be out there, you know, right away to correct any problems. But there really are no trees anywhere along the access road or anything to, uh, be concerned with, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
Have you, uh, flown a balloon up there for, so we can, somebody can visually take a look at this thing?
We have not, we were going to leave that, um, up to the, the board, if the board wants us to do that, we can, uh, but we didn't wanna do it before, just in case, you know, certain people wanted to be out there.
I don't know what the feeling of the board is.
Could you show, I know you had, um, one of the slides, the, the actual fall zone, please?
I know, but see, a lot of times, it's, uh, big enough, it's a mile away.
So where the circle...
Yeah, there's a round circle.
Okay, that's a hundred and ninety-foot fall, fall zone.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the questions of the audience, if they...
You want me to stay here, or do you...
Yes, please. Any representatives, representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition, uh, in, not opposition, in favor of this application? Anyone to speak in favor of? Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this application?
All of us. Believe my eyes.
So, the gravel road... Yeah, your name and address, please.
Your name and address, please.
So the gravel, first of all, the gravel road...
What was your name?
Say your name and address, please.
Hi, Bruce.
Thank you.
Uh, the gravel road they're proposing, do you real, do you realize that's crossing wetlands? Okay? Second, uh, that's gonna be when I sit in my backyard and watch the sunset, I'm gonna be looking at that tower.
How far away are you located?
From that, uh, by about eight hundred to nine hundred yards.
So twenty-seven hu- half a mile?
No, it's not a half a mile.
Well, nine hundred yards is twenty-seven hundred feet.
I don't think it's quite a half a mile.
Bruce, what's your address, call me, is it...
Sixty-four Wheeler Street.
Wheeler Street.
Just on the other side of Stone.
Okay. Um, in, in the package...
Now, are they saying that there's no cell service in that area? Is that what I heard them say?
That's the lady, you can answer that.
I've been on the ground a few miles in any direction of that, and my cellphone works.
It's, it's unreliable to no service in the area. I don't know exactly where you live, and, and it could be...
Oh, I can tell ya, I walked through those woods for the last forty years, and I've had cell service, so I don't know where you're coming up with that.
Well, my phone drops every time I drive up there.
Yeah, so basically, that's my backyard, the gravel road, right there. Here's to...
Pictures for valid words.
Where's the wetlands that you're talking about?
So that road right here, this is all wet, all through here, this all the way across here is all wet, and it's been wet for forty years. When Leonard lived there, it's all wet.
As part of your permitting, we have to go before conservation?
Pretty good brook that runs constantly through here, comes out back underneath, uh, One Forty, one morning.
So we had a...
Did you do a request for determination?
We had a biologist go out here, this is flagged, so the wetlands are flagged on the site plan, and there are no wetlands where he indicated.
They have been flagged already?
Yes.
Do you know where the flagging was?
Well, the site is, there's no wetlands up here, but if there's wetlands here, we are putting the road through.
There's none.
Are you required to go before conservation?
We are not.
Not.
And that water eventually does go into the road.
We have conservation to do with it. We have conservation to do with it.
Yep.
Okay, now, the lady right there, you said you were against it, would you like to speak?
Name, please, and address. I'm Jill Hecklin, Stone Street. Um, I have a couple of questions. Have you already started working out there?
No.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. Second question, 'cause we hear a lot of activity, um, second question, how close is that to Johnny Road?
Where is Johnny Road in relationship to the site, like, is it, over here?
It's a paper, it's a paper road, it's like an old...
It's a paper road?
It's a, yeah, it doesn't, it's not...
About seventy-five yards, thank you, Bruce.
It's a paper road.
I'm just asking you proximity about, you know...
I, I don't know where the road is, I've just been told it's a paper road.
So you haven't you, like, surveyed the area?
Yeah, but I don't know all the roads, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, it's a car, it's not a, it's not a title, but it's not a blacktop, paint.
Okay.
So you haven't seen that? And it's not bad?
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. Um, American Cancer Society has done their research, and they said that the RF waves are potentially pathogenic, and also because of the health issues, such as migraines and What have you, what do you have to present, give?
So the FCC regulates the RF levels and emissions that a tower is permitted to, to put out, so we've submitted in our application package in tab nine from an RF radiation specialist who's done a survey of this area in this particular site, and the FCC allows a, a maximum permissible exposure level of one-hundred percent. Anything above a hundred percent, it needs to have all these special studies done and environmental assessment done. The results of, if every wireless carrier were installed on this tower and transmitting at their maximum exposure level, which, what they're, what they're licensed for, which is, never happens, if they're all doing it at the exact same time, it would be at three percent, so it's well below the FCC established level.
Okay, so their research conerns what your research or the FDA is saying, and when we think about it, we think of our children, our grandchildren, even our pets and ourselves. So, it's not too comforting to hear what you and people who are making a profit out of this are saying, when it's our health at risk, and I know people say, "Oh, yeah, it's not comforting," but they don't live there, so I, I'm not very trusting of that kind of presentation, although the American Society, they're not making...
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this application?
I got a survey of Brussels Lane, Stone Street, I'm a butter...
And your name and address, sir?
Two O Eight, Stone Street, Gardner, matter of fact, my house is right here, and about two thousand feet from the site, yes, I'm concerned. There's a study here that shows evaluations of houses that go down when they put cell towers in view of your front or back of the building.
Thank you for this.
I also found it down ten percent, because I'm repeating, you want the cell tower. Yeah, I'd love to have a cell tower in the neighborhood, because I don't have cell towers, but I don't want my daughter to wind up with it. Like I said, I'm two thousand feet away from here. I hear the donkeys every morning.
From Gama?
From Gama. I'm gonna hear a cell tower, maybe the generators go off every month for testing. What kind of noises does this thing make?
Do you want to answer his question, sir?
Um, so, the state of Massachusetts has regulations that we have to comply with when it comes to sound and generators, and the generators that would be on the site have hospital-grade muffler systems on them, so from, like, the gentleman mentioned he was two thousand feet away, I can guarantee, two thousand feet away, he will never hear that generator. It's basically almost like starting your car is how, and letting it run is about what they sound like, maybe a little bit above that, so from that distance, he will not hear it, and we'll agree to comply with all the state regulations that come, that have to do with sound.
I hear the trucks and the cars that are riding One Forty, are you ready? You not gonna hear that?
No.
What about seeing? There's pictures right there, and there's leaves on the trees, what's gonna happen is when all the trees, all the leaves are gone.
Okay, it's hard to answer that question, 'cause it's, that hasn't happened yet, but good question.
How far from One Forty is that gonna be?
From One Forty, the closest part of One Forty?
And Lake Sheila, that's how far from...
Be seven, seven hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty?
Seven hundred and...
Seventy and fifty, so you're about seven hundred and fifty feet off of Stone Street.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't have the answer to that question, but I know we're seven hundred and fifty feet from, with One Forty.
I am concerned, Dorothy Lang, Two O Eight, Stone Street.
What is your first name, please?
I have grandchildren that play...
What is your name again, please?
Dorothy Lang.
What is it?
Dorothy Lang.
And I have grandchildren that play in our backyard, in our four, and if we get these rays coming from this tower, how's, you know, it's very concerning that they're not even gonna be com- I'm not gonna be comfortable them playing in my backyard. You know, it's real concerning.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
I'm only more of a foot farther, water...
Your name and address, please, for the record?
Waterway, Two O Five, I don't have a...
Now, would you just say...
What's your question?
What's your comment?
Oh, it's a, it's a watershed that goes towards Pro Lethal Water, it's a large, you know, state...
It does.
And that is my level of concern.
Again, we've had a wetland biologist go out there and flag the site, there's no wetlands on the access road to the site.
Is that in the, in the report?
It's on the site plan.
Has your...
And it is mentioned in the report that we're not affecting any wetlands.
Has your surveyor identified the, um, water protection district in relation to the site of your proposed tower?
I might have to ask my, uh...
As, which is in the ordinance?
Yeah, I have to ask my consultant. Could you repeat the question?
Have you identified the relationship between this property, where your tower is gonna be, and the distance to the water protection district? Obviously, no.
Okay.
Okay.
If, that's an answer we can certainly get.
Yeah, I think it might be worth looking at that.
Okay, and if you can get back with a response?
Yeah, we know we're not in it, but I don't know the distance we are to it.
And you can send a response to Mariella?
Can I speak for one second? So right here, right on the backside of the track, is the brook that runs right out of Mam John's, which is the start of the reservoir system for Gardner, runs down here. This brook here comes all the way down through, you can see the wet with this water line the way the tree is, so this comes down through, this is all wet right here, this is all wet right here, that's a pond, you can't tell me that this is not wet in here, it's all wet. It's been wet all along.
All the flagging and everything is in this report?
It is, it's on the site plan.
You guys wanna try to walk through there, it's a little dark.
Any other retort to his comments, or...
That we stand by that there are no wetlands where we're proposing to build and construct...
Build the site, not the, not the road.
Or the access road.
Do you, um, was your wetlands bi- uh, biologist in-house, or was it...
No, no, it's, uh, we, we use, uh, field, don't...
Something, something from them to...
Like a statement?
Yeah, statement.
Sure, shouldn't be a problem. Shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, is anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Mel?
I'm good.
Randy?
I'm done.
It's a site I'd like to go to to see.
You need to say it.
Okay. City official Tom Supa, do you have any comments on this?
Do you want them to fly up a balloon? A 190-foot low?
And we could do that, but it's gonna be on a date. There's no wind.
You know when that's gonna be?
Can you tell us that date?
No. No. I mean, what we can do is try to, you know, set a date and generally, hopefully, the wind is quieter in the morning. And we can look at it then. And, uh, we'll try to schedule a date to do that as soon as we can.
Can the abutters, when you do a site visit, can the abutters be permitted to go on the land?
That would have to be an approval by the property owner.
Is the property owner here? I mean, I know Gamma's here, but...
They can attend. If they don't, your property owner says, "No, you can't go on," then you can't. If they say, "Yes, you can," you can come on, but it's not an open conversation. It's not an extension of the board meeting. It's just, you know, you're gonna look and see what it is. Sean, the question on the floor, this is Sean Hayden, the chief operating officer of Gamma. Uh, the question on the floor was, or can the abutters, if we're going down to do the balloon and site visit, would you allow them to come on to the property?
Yep. I'm not, I just have to schedule it because the residents of the program are going to be brought to see. Before we use the department because they're residents of the program. But we will certainly schedule it to make sure that they will not come. Just pay it off for your attention.
Okay. This is the response from, well, the representative of the property owner.
Come to my house and you can see it pretty good?
Are there, are there alternatives to the balloon test?
Uh, what we would ask, if you want to schedule a balloon test, that we do multiple dates, just in case there's a rain date or it's too windy. We would also recommend flying the balloon early in the morning when the wind's light or nonexistent because as the morning goes on, the wind picks up and it's kind of useless at that point.
We can talk and get a couple of dates and pull them together and submit them to you.
I don't know. Would you like to do that now while the abutters are here, so everybody knows the date? We'd be happy to do that.
I'm okay with that. Just bear well, we turn our phones back on.
And also, the gentleman for Gamma, remember he talked about the privacy, so you have to be considerate of the people that are there, right? You, you had made mention that on the visitation, we have to also be aware of when the clients that are there, no?
Yeah, no, I was pretty sure that they're not.
Okay, all right, just wanted to consider you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we can do that. I have the 30th open.
30th of what?
Oh, wait a minute, no.
We don't have enough time to post it.
I've got the 7th open of October. 14th?
Yeah, I think I can do, I can do the 14th.
Okay. Well, 14th is one day, October.
And do we have a time?
How early do you think?
I, I would love to get there at, you know, 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning and have the balloon up in the air.
I was thinking like 9:00.
That was old. He needs a nap.
Yes, I do.
So let's negotiate at 7:30.
Let's try 8:00.
7:30?
We're buying a pot.
Okay.
7:30. And at 7:30 to, uh, what time would you like the balloon? Usually a couple hours. It gives everybody enough time to, to see it.
We don't, we don't, we don't need anywhere near that. We don't need anywhere near two hours.
Okay.
I think just enough to view from a couple of different angles.
Throw a Sunday out just in case.
Sunday, I could do Sunday.
The 15th, the Sunday. Then, okay, on your side?
Yeah, yep.
All right, let's shoot for those two days.
The 14th and 15th?
Yes.
Same time?
Nine o'clock.
7:30?
7:30.
You get the 14th and 15th of October?
Say that again, what and when?
The 14th and 15th of October.
The 15th would be a, a rain date, for lack of a better term.
Are we looking at 7:30?
Yep.
In it, there's a, a security fence there, so we're gonna have to make sure it's open. Okay.
The Saturday?
With a group, not everybody's gonna be available. So you could have one representative for you people to show up or make it. Okay, 7:30 AM, 14th priority, 15th alternate. Okay?
In about an hour, you want the balloon up in the air?
Excuse me? Hello?
Yes?
Can I, I just thought of a point of clarification as to why the abutters need to view the tower on the property? Wouldn't the balloon flies so that they could see where it's visible, not from the private property?
Well, generally, when we run a case or before a decision, uh, if there's a viewing, we've always offered for any of the abutters, but they have to abide by certain regulations produced by the board.
Okay. Thank you.
It does not become another open meeting. They can, it's pretty much view only for the abutters.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, so we'll sit there. And Mel, Randy, any questions?
Not at this point.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
He's got his list of few things he needs to get us before the next meeting.
Okay, why don't, let's put them out there so it'll be, we'll all be on the same page.
Letter from his wetland specialist. Um, what else did we have?
The town reference, town references?
References from municipalities, correct?
And we've got the wetland flagging in here.
Yeah, that, that would be something from the wetland specialist.
The wetland specialist, his report, um...
The communities, right?
And that would include the determination, their determination that conservation...
That you can contact a whole...
Yeah, that's, that's...
Yeah, I mean...
...intent or whatever. You haven't done an RDA or anything?
No, there's certain requirements that would, you know, evoke having to do that, and you don't meet them.
Just as long as they put that statement in there.
Yeah, okay.
Think of the wetland specialist. That's a big issue.
Wetlands and, yeah, and then the references.
And the references.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions?
What, and can you, on your generator that you propose, get the decibel ratings on that generator?
Yeah. Can do that.
It's just a basic manufacturer's cut sheet.
Yep. No problem.
Does this thing have lights at night?
It does not.
No lights?
No.
Question. You talked about, and this gentleman talked about hearing the generator start and the noise. Do you have any documentation on the decibel rating of that generator?
I already asked that.
He just asked for it.
You already asked.
Okay, good.
That's what, Randy. I know it's hard to leave here.
Yeah, because we don't...
I mean, the acoustics in this, this auditorium are terrible for a meeting.
Yes, it is.
I don't know why we're here.
Okay, anything else to ask? Any, uh, I'm gonna just open, does anybody have another comment they would like to make that has not been brought up before? No comments.
So the meeting is still open?
Oh, and, uh, distance from your property tower
Yeah, it's still open.
To the water supply protection district. Just pull it off the zoning map.
Okay, at this point, if there's no further comments or questions, I am not gonna close the meeting because the meeting will stay open while we do the site visit, and we're gonna vote to continue this to the October hearing.
That's October 17th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, uh, before we move forward on that, you just raised a great question, October 17th. If I'd like to continue this, that's my wedding anniversary of 54 years. So we're gonna move the meeting.
Sounds like a good idea.
You finally figured that out? Where are you taking us?
I just, sooner it sunk in, I said, wow.
Are you happy with that, Mel?
So we're gonna... How about the 18th on a Wednesday?
I have a... I have a 5:30 to 6:15 meeting.
You wanna do it for 7?
Yeah.
We're gonna do it on October 18th. Next meeting is up in October.
No, we want it on a Wednesday. It's gonna be...
At 7 o'clock.
Well, you can do 6:30, and I'll try and get here as fast as I can, but...
Okay. We'll use 7, just to be safe. Okay, do I hear a motion to continue this to October 18th at 7 o'clock?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Seconded.
None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, no opposition, October 18th?
Okay, great, thank you.
7 o'clock. Okay, we're not done yet.
Doesn't seem like a reasonable reason to move me.
I think she should come.
Hello, are you still on?
I think I could go out afterwards.
All right. Okay, the next case before the board. Case 20230905, special permit. Marillo Silva, Four Stewart Street. Renovated building, PID M27-9, S27.
That'd be me.
Oh. Snuck by. Okay, Mr. Silva? Go ahead.
Uh, so my name is Marillo Silva, uh, 354 Malden Street, Holden, Mass. I'm here as the applicant, and I'm here also representing the property owners, or the property owner, Adon Hibeiro, here present with us. Um, so I would, uh, like to request with this special permit, uh, the, uh, ability to reinstate Four Stewart Street as, uh, as a four-family house, as it was once, um, used. So it's been closed for over two years, and that's why the original, uh, appli- building application was denied, so to reevaluate with zoning ordinance. We have presented the, uh, on the, on the application, the existing layouts and the proposed layouts. There are, uh, minimal changes as far as structurally goes. The area has a sufficient off-street parking, so we, we have outlined, I believe, in the, uh, in the application, six uncovered spaces and in the existing two-car garage, two additional spaces. I also have a, a, an alternate, uh, proposition to that, is that there could be, all, all eight vehicles could be outside of the garage as well, uh, if needed. So the, the spots presented there, they are nine by, nine feet by 18 feet, uh, as presented, and they, should comply with, uh, all appropriate setbacks.
Now, was this, uh, house, when it was originally a four-apartment house, was that, did it have a permit of any sort, or was it, uh, just historically a four-family?
So, so that was the, the determining in the use case, uh, of the zoning of the lot as a four-family house.
Four-family, I don't, is this single-family residential one, right?
Yep, correct.
Was, or is not allowed under special permit?
But it was...
But that's the question, is it, is it, was it before?
Yeah, it's been four, four-family forever.
I know, but was there a permit ever issued to it?
It's just a pre-zoning.
Now, that's the question, does it carry over?
Yeah, this is an old building, right?
Oh, I know.
And it hasn't, it hasn't been used for a couple of years?
Yeah. So now the question is, does it carry over?
It should revert back to the original zoning, uh, and reverse back to zoning.
Current zoning, our original.
Tom, you wanna confirm our observation here? This is a single-family one.
It's right here.
Single-family one, and he wants to put in a four-family.
Correct.
And it has, it's been vacant for minimum two years.
Sure.
So our understanding, or at least mine, after that time period, it reverts back to what the existing zoning is, which would be single-family.
So it loses, yeah, it loses whatever status it
Yeah.
originally had assigned to it.
No grandfathering, it's gone.
It's, it's gone, yes.
So now it's a single-family zone, a single-family one, and whatever under the ordinance, not a four, it's not a four-family. It can be single detached, two-family dwelling, and that's it.
So it would require variance.
Three or four-family, not permitted. Multifamily, not permitted.
Okay, so I, I think this qualified, potentially qualified under Section 420. Can I see that?
It does, goes back to provisions of the chapter.
Do you know when this house was built?
Do I?
No, I just asked the gentleman.
I'm not, I'm hardly sure. I'd have to see if I have it here on there.
You've been in it? Have you ever been in it?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the foundation?
Uh, so portions of it is, uh, so that the front area is fieldstone and, um, and brick over it, over grade, uh, and then the, the rear portion of the house, which I believe might have been an addition later on, that is poured in, uh, concrete.
Good, but the front part is a, a fieldstone?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's just the, the original front part of the house.
Same thing you are. This is saying that we're piling back. This is saying that we're piling back.
What's this B?
There you go.
Subject to all the provisions of this chapter.
So is that chapter special permit? What is that?
Does the applicant have his actual denial letter?
His what?
His denial letter, does he have the actual denial letter? Is there some copy of that?
They do have the denial letter here, yeah.
Yeah, because it's confusing, because it's a non-conforming use. Doesn't say we can let it go back after non-conform, special permit.
I think you got it.
Well, it's just, it's all part of this whole section.
Maybe you go to B one.
It's just that it says it refers back to the section. So I don't know what that means.
So, yeah, so it does, so it refers back to this, this chapter. Which, my initial determination was referring back to that, to the chapter, subject to all provisions of the chapter, so... Yeah, B one.
I think if you read B.
Read B?
B one.
B one.
B one, so that'd be a non-conforming use.
So that'd be the special?
That'd be the special permit, the non-conforming use. And I want to change or substantiate extension of the use, change from one non-conforming use to another, less detrimental non-conforming use. It were special permit, change non-conforming looks in accordance with the section, only determined that the change of extension should not be more, substantiate more detrimental. So that, that's where we're at there.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Where are the currents? Okay, so you may continue what you're planning to do with the house and...
Okay, so, we would like to renovate the property thoroughly and bring it up to current building codes and requirements. So, as per the application, not... It's going to include, but not limiting to required sprinkler or fire protection systems, HVAC systems, electrical and plumbing, and any foundation repairs or replacement that might be needed.
You're converting it to four apartments?
It is, it's currently built as four kitchens, four bathrooms.
That's what's going to continue?
That, yes, that's what I would, I would like to continue the use as.
And you said you have your eight parking spaces?
Uh, that is correct. I believe the plan that was submitted with the application, it has six uncovered and two garage spaces of an existing garage building in there. But I, we also have enough for the eight outside of the garage if need be. I'd also like to mention that the area there, behind the building, between the building and the parking spaces as shown there, would be used as snow storage area and the walkway on the left-hand side from the parking spots and facing the garage will have a dedicated trash and recycling space for, for residents in the building.
So you're gonna have a dumpster on site, is what you're saying?
Well, no, just, just for the city, yeah, yeah. Just so that the residents have a proper place to store the bins and the barrels.
Any other questions at this point? Are you planning to have any exterior lighting on the building?
So, just as needed for entryways, so doors.
How about anything like the tenants' parking in their parking area, they have to walk back to the building? They have to go around it? And I don't see any doors or anything for entrance and egresses, so you know, that's kind of a walk that they would come back in the dark.
Uh, yeah, I'd be, yeah, would be more than happy to accept the condition of providing a lighting plan for the, for the walkway, such that, yeah, exactly.
Would you also be open to a timeline to remove snow? Snow, if it gets kind of deep? You're gonna put your snow behind the building?
Mm-hmm.
And if it gets a certain depth, then it becomes kind of not manageable because it starts to freeze? So if there was a condition that, at a certain depth or something, then it has to be removed off-site?
Yeah, we'd be more than happy to accept that, given the, yeah, we we want to make sure that the residents will be able to park and get to their homes safely.
Yeah, because we don't want to lose any spaces to snow.
Or people.
Yeah, them too. Okay, if you want to go over the nine conditions under special permit, please do.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you need me to also read the titles or the questions, or just go in order of my answers?
You wanted to read the questions too, or just, or just his answers?
Uh, you can, for, there's not too many, but anybody connected with this case here? On the Stewart Street property? If you want to read the answers?
Absolutely. So for number one, or on the considerations, so the proposed plans to renovate this property do not alter any existing exterior aspects of the building. Will be renovated, but again, it's not going to be altered. So we're gonna maintain compatibility with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses permitted by, by right in the same district. So that's number one. Number two, the proposed plans provide convenient and safe vehicle or pedestrian movement within the site, as well as in relation to adjacent streets, properties, and improvements. So any, any other areas there, we're keeping the driveway as it is and the parking spots in the back. Number three, the proposed plans allocate sufficient space for off-street parking, loading and unloading of vehicle, goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment use, so of the use of the house. Consideration number four, the proposed plans provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities necessary for the proper operation of the proposed use, including the disposal of sewage, refuse, and/or other waste products, as well as methods for draining surface water. So existing gutter system will be renovated, but maintained. Consideration number five, the proposed plans do not create nuisances such as water pollution, erosion, flooding, noise, odors, dust, vibrations, lights, or visual fence structures or site features, so it's gonna maintain as such. Consideration six, the proposed plans do not create substantial inconveniences or hazards for butters, vehicles, or pedestrians as determined by SPGA, so we're gonna not, not create any hazards there. Consideration seven, the proposed plans are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, so to maintain the dwellings. The proposed plans, or number eight, the proposed plans not significantly detriment city services, tax base or employment opportunities, given that this is a residential. Number nine, the proposed plans are considered with the City Communities Development Plan or Master Plan. Number ten, the proposed plans do not change or alter the permitted use as recorded publicly. The renovation focused solely on the existing building, retaining the same footprint and original characteristics. The building, location, size, height, design, parking, access range, and landscaping, and all those features will, will remain unchanged, apart from looking new.
Okay, thank you. Randy or Mel, any questions at this point, before I go to the floor? Okay, any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? No responses? Any butters would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any butters to speak in opposition to this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak either for or against this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak for or against? No comment? Okay. Open back up to us again if there's anything.
No.
No? Do you want to move forward on it?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to move forward on this application?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion?
I think the point that you brought up about exterior lighting, lighting plan is submit a lighting plan to the building commissioner for approval to provide adequate safety for the occupants of the building.
Yeah. Are you gonna number the parking spots?
Uh, I would like to, yes.
Okay. Are there gutters on this house to handle the water flow off the roof?
Uh, I, I believe there are existing gutters or that there are gutters in there, I believe some of the downspouts are, have fallen by this point.
If there are no gutters, are you planning to put any on?
Yes.
And to direct the water flow away from your butters?
Yes.
All right, the condition of the snow removal, Randy? We're gonna think about in terms of depth of the snow?
Well, I think it should be removed if it impacts the maneuverability of vehicles or parking spaces.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Okay, anything else? Mel, Randy? Okay, then I'll call for a vote to approve this with the conditions that we have so listed?
So, just to review them. Lighting plan to provide adequate illumination for the occupants of the building?
The safety of the occupants.
Safety of the occupants of the building and to the building commissioner for approval.
Right. Then the snow removal, that it does not impact?
What about drainage?
Drainage?
All drainage must be directed away from the budding properties.
All drainage directed away from the property and not to the butters?
Directed away from abutting properties.
Yes. Okay, anything else? I don't think so.
No.
Okay, all in favor with the conditions as noted?
Aye.
Aye.
He said aye.
Oh, opposed? No opposition? Approved.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
You're gonna mention the twenty days to me?
Busy now.
No. I'll look for permission to take care of that. Okay, the next case before the board is case two oh two three oh nine oh six, a variance Cody Durell, sixty-four A Street, parcel ID M twenty-two dash two dash forty-eight, motor vehicle, general repairs.
Mr. Chairman, I think the last name is Duval, D-U-V-A-L.
Okay, it's Duval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there'll be a correction on mine. Okay, Mr. Duval?
Right, Cody Duval of sixty-four A Street. Uh, what I'm planning to do is just general maintenance of motor vehicles on the premises.
Okay, you want to define general maintenance, please?
Um, suspension, brakes, oils, that sort of thing. No engine removals or transmissions.
So it's oil changes?
Yeah, oil changes, transmission fluid.
Any body work?
Transmissions?
Huh?
You change transmission?
I will not be changing engines or transmissions there.
All right, any kind of body work?
No.
No pain in?
Not good at that.
Are you doing that there now?
Not for my premises, no. But yes, I am repairing vehicles.
You are?
Yeah.
You change tires and?
Yeah, sure.
Mufflers, exhaust pipes?
I don't like exhaust, but I can do it, yes.
So you're proposing to do exhaust on your?
I can do exhaust, yes, I would propose to do that.
Now, you said tires, what are you doing, just repairs to flats and things like that, or?
I don't have any machines for that, so...
You don't have the balancing machine or anything?
No, so...
So you're not gonna do tires?
I would, could remove them to bring them somewhere to be repaired, but other than regular tire plugs, no.
Do you do this work in, in the existing garage, or where are you, where are you doing this, in your backyard?
Just in the driveway, yes, yeah.
The driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, is this a single-family home?
Yes, yeah.
If you have any leakage from any of the vehicles, oil, antifreeze, solvents?
Right.
How do you capture that?
Uh, speedy dry pig mats, and you just broom it up and dispose of it.
All right, so you now have no oil and water separator there?
What was that?
Oil and water separator.
What do you mean?
It's a tank and it captures all that liquid and everything else, so it does...
Oh, he's doing it outside, so you wouldn't have one of those?
Huh?
He's doing it outside.
Yeah, but there's nothing built into the driveway?
No, no.
Okay.
Gas tanks?
No.
Any other questions right now?
No.
I am licensed, I'm insured, I'm registered.
Welding?
Yes.
Like how much?
Not a lot, very, very minor.
Like what kind?
Exhausts. I don't do frame. I don't do body welding, so...
Radiators?
I can do radiators, yes, and I contain the coolant and bring it to a shop for disposal, along with the oils.
No, is it MIG or TIG?
What was that?
MIG or TIG welding?
MIG, yeah. One-twenty, no gas.
Okay.
What do you, um, you have a lift or something, a portable lifter?
No lift, no, just Jackson Jacksons.
Okay, any other, I'll go out to the floor and you can think of something. Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representative of the city? Mr. Zupa?
So I think it would be important to know, when we first cut the complaints in, you know, cease and desist was issued. He did stop initially doing work, we did get a couple of other complaints come in after the fact. It appeared as though he was working on a vehicle that was registered to himself. We have had butters, we did have a neighbor send in a letter speaking in opposition. The DPW engineer had also spoken opposition about this via email, stated that they had reconfigured the top of A Street, changed the layout of it, added new curbing, added the grass area that was city-owned. They'd stated that the applicant had been parking on the grass area and has caused damage to that. So we have a couple of individuals that have spoke out in opposition, you know, to the application. One, a city employee, another one, a city employee elsewhere.
We don't have them in our, in our file, in our record.
Okay. Emails were sent over, I believe, to myself and I believe Chairman Fawn, but I'll have to double-check on that.
Okay. I don't have them with me in my... I don't have them with me in my stuff.
I haven't seen them. I have no recollection of seeing them.
Yeah, I haven't seen them.
City engineer or anybody?
I can't say yes or no. If they said they sent them, then they sent them.
Not that I question you, I just said we don't have them.
Okay, I've got some... Okay. Are any butters to the property present who'd like to speak in favor of? I knew as soon as she stood up. Is there anyone on the butter who'd like to speak in favor of? Are there any butters who'd like to speak in opposition to?
So my name is... Address is 62 A Street, a directly by the... So, chapter 675, section 42, motor vehicle general repairs, and not common in a single-family residential zoning district. 64 A Street does not have a garage on the property, so any motor vehicles can end up being done in their driveway or in public way, creating nuisance. Noise from motor vehicles has a range and a little infringe on our right for quiet enjoyment, free from nuisance and harmful creation. Additional traffic and cars are allowed to the street. 64 A Street will cringe on the ease of access to our property at 62 A Street. Some people wear night suits during the day. Noise from their lawn, heat pumps, and the hammering on vehicles will be disruptive to these people. A portion of their driveway actually sits on our property. See, I submitted a survey that shows some of their driveway that is on our property. They have previously worked on vehicles and allowed to boil and transmit fluid, antifreeze, brake fluid, to just leak out on the ground, as with this container's main freeze line, um, GMR, and various things disposed of in there, like hydro head that they've burned. So I'd like to know how they're going to retain the oil, transmission fluid, the fluid of fuel, antifreeze, brake fluid, et cetera, so it does not leak onto our property? And how would they dispose of this? Who's responsible for monitoring it? If they are transporting it to different areas to dispose of it? How are they safely doing that? The fire department's been called on those several times for fires they've had, burning stuff, other than water rush on their property. Flames were taller than their house, or going in the ladders. That's over two stories high. So I'd also like to know if this is allowed, what type of insurance they will have to cover damages to neighbors' property? And is there a buffer zone that's required of like 50 feet for any of this work to be done? What type of licenses do they need to inherit from the state and city? How often will the ground be tested for contaminants? And I submitted this to you with this earlier.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Duval, there's no garage there presently?
There is not, no.
So they've submitted plot plan that showed a garage, that garage been taken down at some point?
Yeah.
How many vehicles a month are you... Were you repairing on your premises?
Upwards of maybe 30, one a day.
And the waste oil, what were you doing in the waste oil?
Containing it and bringing it to a shop for disposal.
To a... So you have a record of that transporting it?
Yes.
To another garage, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Bringing it to another garage? Were they burning in a waste oil here?
They do have a waste oil burner, yes.
What about other liquids like antifreeze, transmission fluid, et cetera? How do you dispose of that?
Brake fluid and transmission fluid all go with the oil category, and coolant, I contain it and bring it to them.
Bring it to them?
The shop for disposal.
Which shop?
Westminster Garage.
Now, were you transporting this in 55-gallon drums, or what do you?
As it comes in, a gallon, two gallons.
Have you got any kind of license or permit from the city to do this, perform this operation there?
I'm not sure what would be needed.
That's why he's here. Mrs. Landry mentioned about insurance. Does your residential property insurance, do they know you're performing this type of operation on your property?
My homeowner's insurance?
Yes.
I don't believe so, but I do have... Actually, I believe, yes, it would be the same company that insures me through the business as well.
So you have a registered business?
Yeah.
That's for I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Has any of the fluids, et cetera, been released on the ground, in the ground, on the driveway, into the street?
On the driveway, yes, not into the street.
How do you clean up, just speedy dry and stuff like that?
Yeah, best I can, I can't really suck it out of the ground.
Have you ever had the property tested where it's dropped, dripped, or no?
No.
Okay. I'll just ask, and she spoke about the flames were taller than the house.
What's that about?
That seems quite exaggerated. I do have fires, maybe once a month, but I don't...
What are you burning?
Brush, wood, paper.
Paper?
Start the fires.
You're burning it in the barrel?
Not usually. I recently acquired the barrel, and it's not really the best.
So you're just burning it in your yard?
I have a fire pit, yes.
Her question talking about her comment, the impact wrenches, et cetera, being noisy, et cetera. You want to address that?
I mean, the city has noise ordinances, I'm not sure if I need decibel readings for impact guns or hammers.
What do you run as operation?
Usually eight to nine, two. I'd probably quiet it down around six.
Days of the week?
Seven days. Of course, on the weekends, I try to keep it a bit more quiet to not bother too many people.
Any other questions?
No.
Not ready this time, no.
Okay. This Tom has left. He's spoken.
Yeah, I guess I have one more question. Since you were issued the cease and desist? Have you investigated other modes of operation of your business?
Yes, I've been, for the past few years, looking for a building to conduct business out of, but they're either very expensive or not what I'm looking for.
And what are you looking for?
I'd like a two-bay with lifts high enough to bring the cars up all the way. That's about it, enough parking for maybe four cars, five cars.
Do you do mobile repairs, too?
I do, yes.
So you go to people's locations and do whatever?
My insurance does cover that as well.
It does?
Yeah.
And you said you can, or you do like exhaust repairs, et cetera?
Yeah.
What do you do with the expended mufflers, tailpipes?
I have a scrap guy that comes and takes all the metal.
Every day?
No.
So where do you store it, till they pick it up?
In the back of the property.
Visible from the street?
Be a long shot, and there's usually cars in the way, but if there were no cars, it could be visible, yes.
Cars in the way, what do you mean? Like your own vehicles, or?
Any car in the driveway. It's a single-lane driveway, and if there's any cars in it, you won't be able to really see from the street.
Did you say how many, on the average, cars you have that you're working on every day?
One a day, definitely.
Just one a day?
Yeah.
You don't have any parked there for the next day?
Sometimes, yeah, yeah.
Do people leave their vehicles overnight there? Say, "I'll leave it tomorrow, we can work on it Friday"?
Yes.
How many would that be?
About the same. I don't work a ton.
You do appointments in advance?
Yes, yeah.
How many cars do you schedule at a time?
Usually only three or four, just to keep it low.
So you conceive three or four in a day?
If I could work on them all, I suppose, yeah.
Once they're repaired, park them on the street till the client comes and picks them up, or?
Usually in the driveway, in the next order of vehicles, or I drive it to the customer's house.
Okay.
All right, you have any more questions or comments?
No.
No.
Not right now.
Okay, I've already asked for the people, they're all set.
You've asked for butters, you have other interested parties.
Any interest... Any parties want to approve or in favor of this application? Any other parties that are not in favor of this application? Okay. And thank you, I have it all right here. Thanks for reading it. Any other interested parties would like to make a comment regarding this application? None, no comments? Okay. Randy, Mel, any final questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Would you like to move forward on this application?
Okay.
Okay. So do we have a motion to move forward, seconded?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of granting this application, say aye. All those opposed to this application to deny, say deny.
Denied.
Denied. Okay, your application has been denied.
Thank you.
Like early on, I said, if you choose to appeal our decision, you go to the city clerk's office, and she'll give you all the information you need.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you've been so gracious to sit there all night. Okay, the next case is 20230907, special permit, Shore House Solutions LLC slash 20, Graham Street, parcel ID M22-5-8, convert all five units to condominiums.
Okay, so Janine Witten, 20 Graham Street, and this is my partner, Pauline Cabray. We are new to this. Sorry?
Her address.
Oh, I gave the street address of the house. Do you want my personal address? 8 Gray Birch Road, Andover.
Unless you're living on the street.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Say your address.
Yes, I'm in 90 W Drive in Le Minster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we recently purchased this property, assuming that it was zoned, as what we were told, zoned for residential, the fifth unit being residential as well, as well as the main structure that is currently gutted and just down to the studs, had been reconfigured for a four-unit. It was before, to our knowledge, a three-unit, so it's our belief that it is a multifamily, zoned for multifamily. So in talking with Mr. Zupa via email, he recommended that our application also include the fact that the fifth unit, that's the detached structure, because the zoning, if I'm getting to say this right, the zoning doesn't transfer with ownership of the property, that we have to ask for your permission to have that residential again. Does that make sense?
So the... So the multi...
The fifth detached unit?
We didn't limit it.
No, we didn't limit that.
We didn't limit it. It was a special.
No, we didn't.
So... So what?
So you have permission to have put that by right?
Oh, okay, wonderful.
Because of our previous decision.
Okay.
We would have had to write the decision to limit it to the previous applicant.
Okay.
Because that language wasn't in there, it goes with the property.
Wonderful, so that goes?
It should be, indeed.
Okay, so there was some confusion with working with the town, what was allowed, so that's why we're here. So we don't need to be here, and you're saying that we're okayed for?
Well, you're here, you might as well ask for it.
Okay, so the plan, we believe, is going to be to convert these units to condos, depending on what the market looks like after the project's done. It might not be feasible, so we might have to just continue it as apartments, but our ultimate goal is to do condominiums and give residents a chance to buy these smaller units. When we were looking at the statistics in town, there's very few units right now for sale in that one-to-two-bedroom area, so that would be a plus for professionals. We're thinking that it might be in the college or the hospital. It might be a draw to be able to get more professionals into the town in order to, you know, be homeowners rather than just having rental units. So that's our goal. Again, we're kind of just learning this as we go, so if there's something else that we need to consider?
I have a question.
Yes.
You used the term, we want to convert them to condos.
Yes, and I was told that they're not... It's... We're going to build condos because it's just a gutted structure right now.
Oh, that was... That's where I was heading.
Yeah, I used the wrong terminology.
All finished?
No, it's...
Convert is just paperwork.
Right, so I said the wrong... So right now, we have to build them first?
All right, so you have to build them out?
Yes.
All right. Then your ultimate goal is they will become condos, they'll be individual living residences?
Yes.
Four and one.
Yes.
Well, I heard you say potentially.
Right.
So you're really not saying that it's going to be, the end result will be a condo, you're just thinking about it?
We really would like it to be a condo, but there are some other restrictions that we're being told, so we're not sure how that's going to, as far as our budget, our renovation budget, if those...
Restrictions in what way?
As far as the border department. So they're saying that there's other restrictions or differences between the apartments and the condominiums, which we're not sure if that's... I mean, I guess we're looking for your expertise on that as well, because...
That would be the call of the director of public works.
Okay.
I know where he's thinking. I know what he's thinking.
Okay, so in that, again, I haven't been able... So I've been back and forth with Mr. Arnold on what he's proposing for us, and it's just not clear why that is, so, you know, we're kind of in discussion with that. If he imposes, I mean, I'll just say what it is. He originally said that we had to include five new water lines and five new sewer lines with $5,000 tie-in to the city for all of that each, so that completely devastates our renovation budget, so we're not going to be able to do that. So then I went back to him and I said, "I don't understand the five sewer lines because you're measuring the water going into the house, why would we need five sewer lines going out?" And he said, "Okay, that's fine." So I'm wondering if I'm not asking the right question about the water line, and we're having a little discussion with that. In my opinion, which is limited, if we have five separate water meters and each individual owner is responsible for those water meters, why wouldn't that be a viable solution?
One tenant doesn't pay... One owner doesn't pay their water bill?
Yes, so...
They shut the water off at the street, which shuts everybody's water off.
Right. However, if we have it in a lock box in the basement that the city has access to, and they have ball... B-A-L-L, excuse my New York accent, B-A-L-L lock valves, that they'd be able to shut off just one?
Again, it's... I think his concern would be, and I totally understand it, as a city employee going into a private dwelling, into the basement, maybe a common area.
So there's a bulkhead?
You're bringing up another...
Yeah, exactly.
In my mind, another gray area is the HOA.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on what you're going to be doing with the HOA, then?
So, as far as what?
I don't know, you tell me.
So, we would develop this condo association, and the HOA would be responsible for the common areas, like the lawn and the sprinkler and snow removal, and there would be, you know, typical... be, you know, typical, like a regular HOA, you'd have to have a board with the, with the members on it, and they'd be in charge of, you know, the issues that might come up. It's gonna, it's gonna be a brand-new building, so it's not like there's going to be a need for reserves, huge reserves, which a lot of times the mortgage companies require. When you're going to buy into a condo, and they have to have HOAs that have reserves in case the roof goes, or...
I was just going to ask you a little thing, you have some different people in here, can you say what the acronym HOA is?
Oh, sorry, Homeowners Association.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're welcome. So that's my understanding of, of, now, I've never, um, created one, but we have a lawyer that we worked with at the closing, that is proficient in this, that, you know, has already, you know, we have him lined up to help us if we can get past the water issue.
Yeah, and we're trying to get the, to create a master deed, where we are going to detail out, like what are the common responsibility that each of the owner will have in that, so it will be incorporated in the master deed.
Okay, so for now, basically you're just maintaining the fact that you're going to...
I'm sorry?
I said, you're, so for now, though, you're just going to run apartments, once it's finished, or do you want to go straight into a condo?
We would prefer to go straight into a condo, um, that would be, yes, that is our ultimate goal, to go straight into the condo, if we can work this out with, with the Department of Water Department.
My question too, though, our comment is if it goes straight into a convo, excuse me, condo, it doesn't work, you have to unwrap this.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
If you go into a condo, or there are five condos.
Right.
It doesn't work, if you can't sell them, et cetera, and you say, well, let's go back and you can start renting the condos, but who's going to own them?
Well, we would own them. We're in a partnership...
We own all five of them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and if you changed your mind to say, we don't want to do condos, now you have to unwrap that whole set of documents that you made up.
So I think what we would do is keep them as condos, and our LLC would own the condos, and, you know, the ones that didn't sell, and then we would be the owners of those and rent those.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that seems more feasible, you know, if we can get three of them sold, and we just have to carry two of them and rent them, then that's certainly, you know, the better way that we would rather go than having to rent five units.
Okay, any questions right now? Because I do have some documents I'm going to read.
Well, I guess the, the question I'm pondering a little bit is, what are we considering?
Why are they here?
Yeah.
Well, because we were told that it didn't transfer, so that's why we're here, that the, that the fifth unit residential didn't transfer.
That's not true, so...
Right.
Was it recorded, do you know? Did it show up in the, in your title search?
It should be in the deed.
So it, it did have language like that, the lawyer said that it was not...
Mr. Zupa.
Mr. Zupa said we had it come, and, and he said that fifth unit, um...
Yeah, so, we, because it was in, was it in March 21 that it was approved? So when we were talking to the lawyer who ran the title, he said that it was not showing in the deed, that, that fifth unit was, um...
The previous owner never recorded it?
Maybe, it's possible.
That's probably what it is.
Yeah.
Because I don't see it in the current deed, there's no reference of the, uh...
So that's what needs to be done, to get that recorded. It's already been approved.
Okay, so, so what does that entail for us to do? So, we do that?
Vote on it again. I think it'd be cleaner, I think it'd be cleaner and...
To do what?
Reissue the...
Reissue the special, special for the, yeah.
So they could put it in the deed.
The accessory unit.
Otherwise, I don't know how you're going to go back and modify the deed.
Let me ask if there's any comments first from the audience, because I got some documents to read from Dane. Okay, Tom left, okay, any butters to this property, would like to speak in favor of? Any butters to the property to speak in favor of? No comment? Any butters in opposition to this application? Any butters in opposition? No comment? Any interested parties would like to speak either way, for or against?
Steven Rockwood, 310 Pearl Street, is this the property that the previous owner had to buy space parking on the next one?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And you mod that as well?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
That's okay, we did, yes. Did you stay this whole night just for that?
No.
No, he's a, he's a regular.
Oh, I was wondering, I was like, okay. Oh, all right, wow, good for you. Okay, so yes, we did buy 34 Franklin Street, and that should, by what it says in our deed, that's going to be 10 to 11 spots, parking spots, and then we have four parking spots on the Graham Street property behind it, so, um...
Okay, I'm going to read the document here. This is from Dane Arnold, sent Tuesday, September 15th, to Thomas Zupa, Building Commissioner, and the current copy to Rob Oliver. Subject, 20 Graham Street. Hi, Tom, 20 Graham Street, conversation, conversion to condominiums. This will require five separate water and sewer services for each unit. We would not allow one service feeding the entire building. They would need separate water and sewer services, along with separate water shut-offs and meters. I'm not saying to deny the request, I am saying they will need to do this as a condition of the ZBA's approval, if granted. They will need to excavate into a street that has been paved within five years. This will require the Public Services Committee approval again. The previous applicant received permission for one new service. Thank you. Dane Arnold, Director, Department of Public Works.
Okay, so now we, in that letter, he's changed his mind of what he said about the sewers.
Well, I mean, what we have to work from is this, I'm not saying you're not telling us correctly...
Oh, no, I can show you the email he sent me.
This is what he sent us.
Right.
Point of, Mr. Chairman, point of discussion, is, I think the question, I don't understand the difference between an apartment and a condo in our eyes. I understand Mr. Arnold's concerns and, you know, but, I, you know...
An apartment is not owned by the tenant. The condo is owned, like you own your own house.
Yeah, I know.
And if there was a, if there's a duplex, they could make two condos.
Why does that make a difference? It's not, condos aren't broken out as a, in the...
No, it's not.
In the, in the used table.
No, multifamilies are.
Yeah.
And townhouses, but nothing on condos.
No.
But it's, it's a separate ownership, um, I think there's, I, I'm going to say, I think there's more regulations on the condo side. The owners, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, I'm just really thinking open, if you own a condo, you got to have, you should have insurance on the condo contents, et cetera. An apartment, as a tenant, all you need is content insurance, you don't have to insure the building.
That's true.
Condo, the building owner does.
Well, the HOA will insure the, uh...
Well, the HOA is going to require insurance from everybody.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the HOA will do that, but I think the, for me, the, the only real difference here for us is to, the special permit to be reissued for the, um...
Accessory unit.
Accessory unit, and beyond that, we can put a condition that basically says they have to resolve the issue with the city in terms of conversion to condos, it's not a ZBA issue. Because there's nothing in the ordinance...
Oh, there's not?
...to refer to, but we can put a condition in it that satisfies at least the, the city.
Do you have legal counsel?
Mm-hmm.
Does that individual address this?
No, he's, he hasn't addressed it yet, he's, he's looking more into the law, and the, um, you know, what's, the, yeah, the law, right, the, the statutes, I don't know what they're called, but no, he hasn't addressed it yet.
So, we looked at, I guess, we had a lot more question, because if it's a multifamily usage, technically we should not be requiring a special permit, it's just that at the end, we need to file the master deed, and the city has to approve that before we can sell it as condos, but with the conversation that we had, they said we have to come and ask for, it seems like the multifamily use is different from condos, and we talked to it with our legal counsel, but he's like, I don't think so, it's not different, but, so it's kind of like there's a confusion that multifamily uses is different from using us as condos, so that's why we're like, we have to come here and see what you guys think.
When you said, did we have legal counsel, oh, you mean for, for the water portion of this?
On the what?
On the water portion, like...
All of the above, all of the above.
The whole of it.
All of it, okay, so, he's given us a few tips, but that's about it. Do you...
I think you need more than a few tips, too, because this is, it's sort of a complicated issue, it's just, I mean, you don't even have completed structures, all you've got is a shell.
Correct.
Yep.
So, I'm, I guess I'm confused about what is, so we're looking for it to be approved for condos, and we need that fifth unit zoned as residential, right? And, and so, can those things be done?
I don't see how we can...
I think we can take care of the fifth unit.
We can take care of the accessory unit, I think.
That's all we can really do.
That's all I would do, and if, you know...
And then is the fourth?
And if your attorney determines that you need to come back before us regarding this condo question, I'm, I, then make, do another application.
Well, I guess I'm confused about what the, what the, what question we would be coming back with.
That's a, that's a good question, I don't know, I don't, I don't see, I don't see...
So if we develop these, right, if we develop them, go ahead and develop them as apartments, and then file the paperwork for the condo conversion, that's all we need to do?
Well, you file a paper, but you have to get the city, um, DPW person to get that resolved.
Right.
We're not going to override or have any influence on what the DPW director wants.
Right.
That's his.
But as of right now, we're okay, we're cleared to go ahead with the four units in the main house.
As, you can finish those, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that, so then, yeah.
So you think the path, and you guys just discussed it, is, you know, move forward as apartments? Once you, and it doesn't mean you got to have them occupied, you know, you've got four units to rent, now that they're ready to rent, you make a decision to...
But their quality and furnishings may be different in an apartment versus a condo.
Then you want to go and say, let's convert these to condos, because we see it all over the, where you get the old buildings, and now they put in a couple, they convert the condos and...
No, I think of the old parsonage behind the fire station on Elm Street.
And you'll see houses that exist today that have like three apartments in it, next thing, they're converted to condos.
So that's my question with the water line, do they make everyone do this and put in...
We can't answer that.
Oh, you can't answer that?
I don't know.
That's not under our jurisdiction, the water lines or electrical hookups or sewer lines, you've got to go to those departments and find out what they're doing.
Between you and Dane Arnold.
Okay, so as far as zoning is concerned, if, like this particular property is approved for multifamily unit, so it means that it can, is also approved for condos, just for the zoning?
We don't care what you do with it.
Okay.
All right, so, the bottom line, though, is you have to resolve the accessory building tonight.
Okay.
Because for whatever reason...
I suspect it wasn't recorded or something.
It doesn't look like it was recorded, so your best bet, as the chairman pointed out, is we vote on it again tonight, and that's the cleanest way to do it.
Okay, and then what does that entail for us, like...
Then you have to put it in the deed.
Okay.
You, you would, you would take the decision once it's written, and you would have it recorded.
And you, you get, get that to us by an email or something, or...
It will be made, the original has to be, it's an original gets mailed to you.
Okay, and then we, we have that...
Yeah, because then if you want to convert that to a condo, you're back to Dane Arnold again, what are you going to do about the water line?
Right.
And the sewer line?
Okay.
It's not going to go away.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we get the clear from the zoning, now we can deal with the DPW on how to satisfy the requirement.
Yeah, and I think if you have an attorney that is versed in condominiums or condominium law, and if you have the apartments or whatever, then he should be able, or she should be able to draw up the documents and the path that you need to take to convert them to condominiums, because it's done, I mean, there's apartment houses, the next thing, they're all converted to condos.
Yeah, so it sounds to me like we could go ahead and do the apartments and get them all built out, and then, and then we just come back and, we don't even, you don't care what we do with them, so we don't have to even...
We don't see a...
I think, I don't, I don't see where you would have to come back to us, I, I may be missing something, but at this point, I don't, I don't see it.
Okay. So, do we stand here while you vote for our...
Well, your, your best thing, though, you've got an application before us, you'd probably want to withdraw that without prejudice.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So if something, if the attorney says, this is what you need to do, you can come back without a wait, you know, remember the two years I mentioned earlier?
Yes, okay.
That's a long time.
That is, okay.
Especially if you're making monetary investments, and you got to sit there for two years.
Oh, yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to do that.
I don't want to...
So does that mean...
We have to draw the application.
We got to, we have to approve the, uh...
Re...
Reapprove the accessory building, so they can't withdraw.
Well, let's reapprove it.
That's what we need to do.
Reapprove it first, then withdraw.
I, I think, I think what they need to, I think what they need to do is, is request an amendment to their application to approve just this, and, and at this point, forget about the condominiums and...
So I did write an addendum to just add in that fifth unit.
Like we are requesting now an amendment to remove the fourth unit, the condominium part, and just approve for this.
Want to get the, pull the condominium out of there.
Okay.
Just go after the other one.
Okay.
That'll make it cleaner for you anyway, so...
So what, so how do we go about doing that?
You're the, the two of firsts, we've never seen stuff like this come in.
Oh, okay, all right, well, we've never done it, so...
You're blazing trails here.
Okay, well, geez, we were hoping not to, we were hoping for this would all be smoother for us, we were told when we purchased that everything was already approved, and we were supposed to be ready to go.
I'm not sure you can modify your request here without a withdrawal and then reissue, but I don't know. I don't know.
I don't either. That's a great question for a zoning attorney.
It is.
Everyone's stumped, the last one of the night, and we stumped you.
Is your attorney a zoning attorney?
No, he's a real estate attorney.
Well, I mean, this should be up his alley, or her alley.
Yeah.
I mean, the only one I could rec, you know, suggest, would recommend to attorneys is Tommy Gibbons and Christine Trey.
She was the attorney for this original permit.
Yeah, she was.
Chris, Christine?
That's why I'm surprised it wasn't recorded.
I know, that's what, that's not...
Well, that might be where you want to go back to, and talk to that attorney who handled this whole thing, and why wasn't it recorded?
Okay, um, I...
Okay, up to when can we withdraw without the presidencies?
You don't have to do it now. We got... The hearing is open, it's a special permit. We can just leave it open.
Yeah, we don't have to close the meeting.
We don't have to close it, so we can...
We'll deal with it next, in October 18, no?
We'll just continue it.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so... We're in a no-time constraints until we close the hearing.
But are we under time constraints to start work?
Well, you have your homework to figure out. You know, was the original, this decision, recorded or not? Because it's not referenced in your deed, which means you paid for a title search in a closing attorney who didn't find this or should have found it. Why didn't... Why wasn't it found?
Okay.
And was it recorded?
If it was granted, it's...
It was granted in what?
March 21.
So, it's redundant. I mean, it was already approved.
Let's see here. That's March 21, 2023 meeting. That was just past March. It should be recorded.
Should be. So, I'd contact Chris, Attorney Tree.
Attorney Tree was the attorney that this, the previous owner utilized for the property.
Yeah, she's in Pittsburgh.
And ask why it wasn't...
Ask if she knows the status of the recording. So, you purchased the property and, you know, it wasn't picked up, and now you've got this question for Mr. Zupa, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, you had a decision to convert it to apartments? Decision's made? Why wasn't the deed recorded?
Okay. All right.
And she may say it was.
Okay. Does this impact us starting our work? Any of this?
What's your question?
In the main building, probably not.
Not in the main building, no.
Okay.
It's only that accessory building, because, you know, the building permit was issued, the gutting and everything, that was already issued, right? To the previous owner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think you'd be able to.
Yeah, I mean, you should be able to go to work and do what you want.
With the, you know, get the building permit and stuff.
Okay.
Have a contractor get the building permits and stuff.
Okay, and then, as far as the water with his...
I mean, I'm surprised enough father along in there, because when we were there, I mean, they were...
They were working like crazy.
They were working like crazy when we were there.
So, what happened? They were working like crazy, and then, I guess she took the insurance money or didn't have enough for the whole rehab, so then, she sold it. And then, now, we've been... We've had it for a month and haven't been able to start anything because of all this commotion of...
You could start... You could do the work in the main house.
Okay.
It's the only thing... It's only the accessory building that's the hangup.
Okay.
And, well, then, you gotta...
We believe to be the hangup.
Yes. And you may find that it's done, but, I mean, we can't answer the question, but Attorney Tree can.
Okay, and then, as far as what we were just talking about, continuing or withdrawing the application, are we doing any of that?
We're just gonna continue to our October...
We're gonna continue to the next meeting.
Yeah, we're not gonna...
Okay, and then, what do you want from us at the next meeting? Like, what are we supposed to come back with?
Well, that can tell us how you made out.
Yeah.
With this recording of this deed?
Yes.
And you don't care what we do with them? We can convert to condos if we want?
It might be worth a question to ask of your attorney. Okay, this deed was or wasn't... This decision was or wasn't recorded? What exactly do we need to do to convert these from an apartment to...
And that standalone unit.
Right, okay. Okay, I think we've got it.
You know, whether that... Your attorney believes you have to come back to us? I don't see it, but what do I know?
I don't either.
But if we do a continuance, don't we have to show up?
Oh, yeah, you gotta come back and see us again, but it may be real quick.
Okay. Like, we could be first?
Yeah, continued cases always go up front.
Okay.
And Attorney Tree is... If you get the right answer from Attorney Tree, it could be a very quick meeting.
Okay, but we definitely come back no matter what?
Yes.
To tell you if we had it recorded, and then...
Well, you have to, because right now, you can't work on the accessory building.
Okay. Okay.
And you might want to tell them that, say, "You can't work on the accessory building."
If it's recorded, can we work on it?
Talk to the building and get some cash.
John, Building Commissioner, I'll tell you that.
Tom Zupa? Okay.
Tom Zupa, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Okay. October, whatever.
18.
18.
So, we have to continue them to next month?
Make a motion to continue to October 18.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
None, all in favor?
Aye.
You're continued to next month.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's the end of our cases, and now, we've got other business to do.
Really?
Yeah. Marielle will put this all in here.
She's too organized.
It's her fault. Okay, the meeting minutes. You ready?
Yep.
Meeting minutes, August 21. That's the meeting date.
Motion approved is drafted.
That's Dave. Yep.
You approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
Pass it down, Ray will sign them.
Yep.
Hey, hell. I'm going down through all this.
Yeah, it's all right.
Exhausted.
Once in a while.
Oh, these are some minutes. August 15 minutes. I need them approved. On a vote. Eglin, Ante, and me.
Best printed.
Okay.
My friend Mel.
Did... Okay. On July 14, the ZBA went to the residence of Mr. and Mrs. Page, checked out their chickens. This is a site visit.
Oh, yeah.
All approved?
Whoop, you got a problem. I went there, not Randy.
Huh?
He said he didn't want to see the chickens.
That went much smoother than I thought.
Mel?
Oh, this is... How is this? Oh, ZBA in-person meeting on June 20. It's already signed.
We just have to vote on it.
Oh, yeah, that's all. I signed it, Ante, Eglin, and Mel.
Oh, that goes back.
So...
We just have to vote on it, just to confirm it.
Did you review this and everything?
Yeah, we signed it the last time, so, yeah.
Okay, so, these meetings... These minutes are approved. In the green folder is more correspondence. All it is is notification by Mass DEP. It's an AUL on a property on Friddette Street, which we don't have any case on.
And make a motion to place on file.
Okay.
In the property file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Any opposed? None approved. All right, I think that takes care of our case tonight. What is this thing? Oh, I know what it is. Thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
It's a motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.